This conference will now be recorded.
I guess it is now.
Yes, thank you Diane.
No problem. I knew we were missing something.
Alright, so I guess we have a motion and a second.
A roll call.
Alright, here we go. Dave Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height, still not here. Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you so much, everybody. And Tony, I'll reach out to you to address the comments in the letter, okay?
Sure, no problem. Just call whenever you can.
Okay, you guys, everybody have a good night.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nice, take care. Alright, we will move on.
I am back.
Okay. Okay, is that permanent now, Ryan?
I hope so, yes.
Okay. Alright, good. You only missed one. So, the next one, we're moving on to be of the subdivision review. George Sam, Minor Plan 2020-201. Request for preliminary final plan review. Greg, staff presentation.
Okay. We have seen this one last month. This is an application to re-subdivide the properties located at 2449 Walbert Avenue, containing an existing dwelling and two garages oriented toward Walbert Avenue on a 3.0468 acre parcel, and 2421 Belmont Street, containing existing dwelling on an approximately 0.57 acre property. The plan proposes to create a new lot line along the current R4 medium-density residential/neighborhood commercial zoning district boundary line, and remove the lot line between 2449 Walbert Avenue and 2421 Belmont Street. This lot line adjustment would result in 2449 Walbert Avenue containing an existing dwelling and two garages oriented toward Walbert Avenue on a 1.0131 acre parcel, and 2421 Belmont Street containing an existing dwelling on an approximately 2.7654 acre parcel. The subject properties are zoned NC Neighborhood Commercial along Walbert Avenue, and R4 Medium Density Residential to the north of unopened Belmont Street. George C. Sam is the owner of 2449 Walbert Avenue and the applicant. Quick history. The Planning Commission reviewed this plan and took it under advisement at their October 15, 2020 meeting. On June 20, 2019, Elysium Acquisitions submitted an application for Roosevelt Street Flats' Major Plan 2019-102, which continued along for a little while, but has not been resubmitted. And the most recent waiver from time limitation to review the plan expires in 12, 11 days, November 30. And then the last bit of information of history is August 21, 2013, the Board of Commissioners by ordinance 975, rezoned the southernmost portion from R4 to Neighborhood Commercial, and that would be the 2449 Walbert Avenue parcel. The Community Development Department recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommend preliminary final approval to the Board of Commissioners, subject to the applicant complying with the following conditions. One, if deemed to be necessary, subdivision improvement, security maintenance, and indemnification agreements acceptable to township be executed, that sufficient security in a form acceptable to the township be posted, such security shall be available for draws presentations no further than 60 miles from the township's office, and evidence of necessary insurance coverage be provided to the plan being recorded. Two, that the applicant addressed to the Satisfaction Township Engineer, the comments of the Township Engineers contained in his review letter dated November 13, 2020. Three, that the applicant addressed to the Satisfaction Community Development Department, the comments of the department as contained in its review dated November 15, 2020. Four, if deemed to be necessary, the applicant shall obtain a letter from the Lehigh County Conservation District approving the Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan pursuant to Section 31239E of SALDO. Five, if deemed to be necessary, the applicant shall obtain a letter from PADEP approving the Sewage Facility's planning module or exemption thereto. Six, if deemed to be necessary, the applicant obtain a Highway Occupancy Permit from PENDOT for the road and utility work within the right-of-way of Walbert Avenue. Seven, that the applicant complies with forthcoming recommendation of landscape and shade tree. Believe that's already in there. Well, contingent upon the Planning Commission's recommendation, of course. Eight, that the applicant shall dedicate to the township additional right-of-way along the frontage of Walbert Avenue at a width acceptable to the township. The dedication shall occur prior to the plan being recorded. The dedication shall be by deed of dedication in a form acceptable to township solicitor, and an opinion of record title prepared by the applicant's counsel indicating the dedication is free and clear of liens and encumbrances that would affect the township's use of said property. The applicant shall furnish to the township and, I'm sorry, to the township solicitor, a description of the dedication that has been approved by the township engineer, a copy of the current deed for the property showing the current ownership, and recites the deed book and volume and page reference. Nine, that the applicant reconciles all open invoices for Township Engineering and Legal Services prior to the plan being recorded, and 10, that the plans are to be revised and deemed to be clean prior to them being presented to the Board of Commissioners. For those of you who are interested, Planning Commission deadline to act is January 18. The Board of Commissioner's deadline to act is February 17.
Okay, and so those are the, the conditions. And then there's, there's also, I guess, five waivers or deferrals for curb, sidewalk, driveway apron, street construction standard, and trees. I guess, so we'll be doing that. The applicant? You're from the applicant now?
I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Mark Luftle, High Engineering. We did obtain some deferrals on the improvements along Walbert Avenue, sidewalk, curb. If I could just back up one second, in terms of the conditions, I know you put it in there, Greg, if deemed to be necessary, when we're talking about either escrow, LCCD, DEP, sewage facilities planning module, and an HOP. Must we keep those in there as part of the condition, that they standard language, you know, I know, like you said, or like I said, it's deemed to be, if deemed to be necessary?
Yes. The reason that's there is if this goes to the Board of Commissioners and they do not accept the deferrals and make you put in the sidewalk, that would be within the right-of-way of PENDOT. So, you would need the other thing. So, until those deficiencies, until everything's passed, we need them in there.
That's, alright, that makes more sense. And in terms, I think it might be Tony from Pittcock's letter, not far after that, in your packet, there's a page with eight comments on it. One dated November 13, and it's in comment number four and number eight, which are, which are fairly similar, and they deal with the showing existing and proposed water and sanitary service laterals, of which we're not proposing any on the northern lot, and there are existing shut-offs shown on the southern lot, I believe, and then discuss matters pertaining to the design of a water distribution and sanitary sewage systems with Public Works. I just noticed those two comments. I mean, I had, we have a letter from Public Works that said they have no comments, and a letter from the Township Municipal Authority Engineer, Spock Stevens McQuoey, who I believe is the authority engineer, and they have no comments on utilities since there are no new utility extensions or connections proposed. So, I was just wondering maybe if we could get rid of those two comments as regards to this plan. The other ones are fine, it's all the stuff we've discussed in the past.
This is, this is Tony, this is Tony Talarita. In terms of eight, with the clearance letter from Spock Stevens, that's fine. We can, you know, our, our list of comments will obviously, we'll coordinate, be able to knock down. So, I have no problem either responding or whatever, saying we have this letter, and then we'll be easily, be able to take out number eight. In terms of number four, the reason that we asked for these, specifically the waters or as well shown on the property, we just didn't know if those wells were connected to the house, and it was either the garage or the house was on a, on-lod system, or if there was a public water through there. That's why we're just asking for the clarification. But again, I said earlier, most of the things in our letter are very much engineering cleanup, so I figure we can work through those with little, little effort, so that's fine, Mark.
Hey, I just didn't want to get to the board and think that I still have a laundry list of items to complete yet, and then I'm, I'm fine with that too, Tony. Other than that, I understand it's a zero rep fee by direct commission, and I didn't see anything that jumped out at us in terms of engineering. We'd be happy to move forward to the board, hopefully get a positive vote.
Okay. Anything else? We go to public, any, any comments from the public?
I see nothing in the chat box. Open up for the phones.
Okay.
Phones are open.
Going once, going twice? Guess not.
Okay, so we'll move on to, I guess we have deferrals. First one is a installation of the curb. Do you want me, should I read off this, SALDO, I'm reading it from page 67, I guess, in your, there, there are five deferrals, I guess these are old deferrals. So, the first one's installation of curb, deferral, installation of curb, SALDO 312-35B3AI. Motion to for a deferral on that.
Can I, can I make a point, if you don't mind, Bill? I think this is something we talked about a little bit earlier. It was written, the deferral was requested per the plan, that it has to be per each land development or change of use. I just didn't know if you wanted to clarify that based upon the difference between our letter and the deferral in the plan? That may be something you'd like to clarify?
I would recommend that the deferral, yeah, a standard deferral, so the township can call in that deferral per their discretion, and not limit calling in the deferral to land development.
Okay, that sounded alright. Tony?
That's at your discretion, guys. I just want to, just bring you aware that, that was a note on the plan, so I just wanted to be clarified that for, for the applicant's sake, that if the plans need to be changed or mildly edited, that it's known for the request of the Planning Commission.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. Wilson.
Okay. So, so that, alright then, Tony, but the motion as, as was said?
I guess, Greg, you might want to jump in here, but as long as, you know, it's at the pleasure of the board, I believe, to just defer it. So, I think that's a request. I don't know if the applicant has anything to say, but that's, that seems to be the request by the Planning Commission.
I, I thought we actually changed some language on our deferral note even since the last meeting at the request of, of a couple of township folks with my design engineer, Justin Gross. Am I right, Greg?
That's correct. And then, once, once we looked at them, I, I sent it upstairs, and it was pointed out that, yeah, township does, doesn't like restrictions on the deferrals. We prefer the "call at any time." So, we're adding more changes to that list. So, basically, we're, we're requesting, we're, we're basically stating a standard township deferral is that the deferral can be called at any time. And so, the notes on the plan would have to be adjusted to remove any specific references to when a deferral can and can't be called.
Alright, and is that, is that, do you have that written somewhere in the town, or I guess that's going to be part of our condition letter? You'll, you'll, you'll say that as a condition, that we can use that same terminology than on our plan, just a normal township deferral?
Yeah, I believe my letter actually states it. It's the one real comment that I had left in my letter.
Alright, well, I apologize, it wasn't there. And again, I sort of thought we were told to change our language to what we have on there now.
Yeah, we did. And, and we worked that out between, I, I think it was between me, Tony, and Justin. And then, as I said, once, once that was actually put on the plan, I sent that upstairs to have my boss look at it, and a few days later, he came back with that comment, so. So, that's where we are. So, on, in my letter on page 72, under legal and other, that should cover it. So, as long as you adhere to that condition, that's, township's covered.
That's, that's fine. We can live with that.
Okay. So, that was the installation of the curb. Do we, do we vote on that?
No. We had Diane, but no second.
We have a second?
That Alan? Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, roll call, vote. David Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Installation, well, there's still, that, that was just the deferral on the curb, right? So, now we're going to deferral on the sidewalk, SALDO 312-35B3AII. This be a standard, they'll all be standard deferrals that can be called at any time. Do we have a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Was that Brian?
Yes.
Okay.
Brian, so Diane and Brian. Okay. Roll call.
Dave Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Looking for a motion for, third one is installation of concrete driveway, deferral installation of concrete driveway apron, SALDO 312-35B3AIV.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dunbar, second by Kelly. Roll call, vote. Dave Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, and then the next one is a standard township deferral for the installation of street, for the street construction standard. Greg, can you explain that one a little bit again, the installation of street construction standard?
Yeah, basically, within the township construction specifications, there are standard specifications for how a street is constructed. Three of them, of course, local arterial and collector. So, basically, that states a cartway will be 36 feet wide with a subbase and a wearing coat and a top coat, with sidewalks of five feet, and they're located one foot inside the, outside the property line with curbing. So, basically, that's the standard of how to, how you build a street. So, since Walbert is pretty much constructed, and we're not going to require the applicant to rebuild the street, their half of the street along their frontage, that's what the deferral is for.
Okay, gotcha. You hear a motion to allow that deferral?
So moved.
Second.
Brian Height, seconded by Diane Kelly. Roll call, vote. Dave Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, and then the final deferral is for the installation of street trees, SALDO 312-40.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Dave Dunbar, second by Diane Kelly. Roll call, vote. David Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, and then finally, a recommendation, a motion to recommend a preliminary final approval, plan approval to the Board of Commissioners, subject to the 10 conditions.
I'll make a motion.
That was Diane, the second.
Yep. Motion by Diane Kelly, second by Alan Tope. Alright, roll call, vote. Dave Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
David Wilson. Okay.
Motion passes six to zero.
Hi.
Okay. That should take care of that.
Okay, again, once again, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Alright, good night. We'll move on to item C, skilled nursing addition for Cedar Brook Senior Care and Rehab, Major Plan 2020-108. Request for preliminary final plan review. Greg, you want to start off?
Cindy. This is an application to further develop the property located at 350 South Cedar Brook Road. The plan proposes the consolidation of three lots on the campus to one, the demolition of the abandoned juvenile detention facility, the construction of a three-story, 141,625 square foot addition, 80 parking spaces, access driveways and associated stormwater management facilities on the 58.37 acre tract. The plan also proposes the construction of a stormwater management facility on the 5.7 acre parcel at the northeast corner of the Cedar Brook Road, Dorney Park Road intersection. The subject properties are zoned R4 medium-density residential. County of Lehigh is the owner and applicant. Lengthy history, which I'll skip over. The Community Development Department recommends that the Planning Commission take the plan under advisement to afford the applicant the time necessary to address the reviewing agency's comments. Our recommendation is contingent upon the applicant granting a township a waiver from the timeframe in which to review the plan. The Planning Commission deadline to act on the plan is December 14. Obviously, we won't get a meeting before then. Board of Commissioners' deadline is January 13, 2021.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Turn it over to the applicant?
Yeah, my name is Adam Whalen with KNW Engineers. I'm representing the, the county of Lehigh who owns this property, the Cedar Brook Skilled Nursing Facility. As Greg had mentioned, they're, they're looking to add an addition, 141,000 square foot, four floors with a basement and a penthouse. Looking to redo their, their parking around that whole facility. That would involve the demolition of their existing parking facilities around the, the existing facility, demolition of the former juvenile detention facility at the rear of the site, where there we will be proposing another parking lot for more parking for the facility during the stage of construction and for future use. On, on that.
Excuse me a second. Sorry to interrupt. Greg or whoever's presenting, could you show like the, just the layout of the plan rather than the checkerboard we got going?
Am I still the presenter?
Yeah, yeah, Tony, could you?
Yeah.
Could you?
I just think it gives better context, you know?
Yeah, that's better.
Alright, good. Can everyone see? Perfect. And Adam, if you need me to flip around pages, please let me know.
Sure. Okay, yeah, so the site plan involves, you know, this 141,000 square foot addition. As you can see, it's a bold outline in front of the existing facility. With that, we'll be realigning the, the existing driveway. It was once a five-way intersection. I don't know if you want to go the existing features plan, but it was a five-way intersection before, and now it's, now it's a four-way. Yeah, so as you can see there, there's, you know, you got the Cedar Brook Road and Dorney Park Road come together there, and then there's three branches off that go into the Cedar Brook Facility. One of them is a do-not-enter-from-the-main-road, but still, it's a five-way intersection, it's kind of, you know, kind of congested there, so we took it down to four total curb cuts, I guess. You can go back down, Tony. You can stop there, actually, if you want. So, so the property is located actually in Lower McCundy Township and South Whitehall Township. There are four properties that we're going to be, you know, performing improvements to. Three of the properties are here, shown in the bold, that we are looking to consolidate. Two are already owned by the county of Lehigh, and one is actually owned, it's that funnel-looking parcel, it is owned by PENDOT right now, but they have an agreement to buy that piece from PENDOT, so that is in the works, and we'll be able to provide that recorded deed documentation to the township once that is all said and done, I believe, by the end of the year. You can go to the site plan, Tony. So, as part of the site plan, like I said before, the driveway went from five, five-way intersection there, the intersection of Cedar Brook and Dorney Park Road, into a four, the main entry to the left from Dorney Park Road. It goes up to a driveway, and then it goes into a drop-off loop where patients can be dropped off and, or picked up. And then also down to this plan south, there's additional parking that goes to the south and west on the plan around the new addition. Before the, all the parking was basically at the bottom of the sheet, so now we had to work around that and propose parking on the side and the front there. At the top, you'll see another parking lot. That's where the old juvenile facility was, but now it's being demoed, and additional parking is being constructed there, along with the sidewalk from that parking lot down to D-Wing, which is that far-left piece of the existing main facility. Also, as part of this project, on the right-hand side of your plan, you'll see a roadway. That roadway is pretty much there already, but it's just being realigned to make it a little bit more straight-through, rather than having some bends and curves and more defining the existing driveways going to the different maintenance buildings and the boiler house and to the back of the existing facility as well. Yeah, we're, we're providing over 500 parking stalls. I believe it's more like 4, 514. Latest calculation that I came up with was that we needed about 470. I, I presented that to Greg in an email yesterday. We have yet to talk really through that, just to confirm that we're all on the same page. Um I I presented that to uh Greg in an email yesterday. Uh we have yet to talk really through that, just to confirm that we're all on the same page. Um. Yeah, this is in the R four zone. It is in existing non-conforming use, so we're using the R five bulk regulations. Uh to be able to, you know, comply with the zoning ordinance as much as possible. Um if you want to go to the next sheet. Tony. I guess probably the next two sheets, actually. You can keep going. We'll go to like the uh the grading plan or utility plan. So here's um here's the grading plan or utility plan. Uh you'll see that. Um we have created a stormwater uh infiltration basin at the bottom right hand of the plan. Um is adjacent to Cedar Creek. Uh Cedar Creek is uh listed by chapter ninety-three of the P A. Code as um a high quality stream, so we need to, we have submitted our N P D S permit application to the Lehigh County Conservation District. Uh for an individual N P D S permit, um instead of a general due to its high quality nature. Um included with that, we are also proposing a rain garden um near the drop-off loop at the front of the site. Uh you'll see that other circle, kind of smaller there. Um. And we are for the upper portion of the site, um where the new parking lot's going to be, uh we are increasing impervious cover a little bit there, so. We are actually modifying um the existing detention or existing detention basin. Uh to plan north there. If you want to scroll up a little bit, Tony. Yeah, right there. So that's an existing detention facility, and we are modifying that slightly to be able to handle the increase in. In flow from the uh increase in impervious cover of that parking lot. Um as far as utilities go, um we we will be uh connecting to public water and public sewer. Uh electric is there as well. Um gas is also there. Gas line actually goes through the middle of the site. We have to relocate it. That's owned by a U G I. Um we have um we have to coordinate um quite a bit still on the water and sewer part of this project. It uh it's very. Very complex uh utility uh situation here at the site due to its uh due to its history. Um I requested a meeting with them just to kind of go over everything and to make sure that we're hooking up to the right facilities and such, and uh. Um to to make sure that we know how to go forth with the sewage planning of this site. Um I guess one of the, one of the things that we can hit on is uh is traffic in a sense here. Um. The the intersection there, I guess, is part of the South Whitehall Township Comprehensive Plan to be improved at a later time. I guess there's nothing set in stone. Um but I talked to Tony previously about that, and uh basically, the intent is of the comprehensive plan is to. Smooth out that intersection such that the bend isn't so harsh, I guess, for lack of a better word. Um it'll be more gradual for for better flow of traffic. Um we all, we have a meeting scheduled as well for that. Uh with the township and the engineer to kind of go over what that might look like and how that might affect our store or basin as it is today.
Have you uh ever considered putting a roundabout there? That would help your access driveways as well, you know?
No, well, we honestly have not looked into that at at this time.
Just something to think about. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, and I know I got a comment also from the uh engineer saying that we need to provide a a traffic narratives uh showing the increase of of traffic, so. We'll be able to provide a narrative uh showing what the anticipated increase in traffic might be, although um it is. There there really isn't an increase in the number of uh tenants or patients, if you will, for this uh skilled nursing facility. Um the A wing of the existing facility is actually being trans, I guess, uh. Uh converted into apartments um where the bed, the beds that were there before are now going to be put into the new addition. Um it is the intent of the county to have a net zero number of beds. Um that no increase, no decrease, really. Um they just need the um new facility. Um and also, they're going to be taking the beds just slowly out of the existing facility um into the new wing. Um. Uh we have also, go ahead.
Uh since you were on the traffic aspect of your presentation, I did have a question about the uh. The access to the the new parking lot where the juvenile uh detention center was.
Sure.
Was abandoned. Are you widening that driveway? I've driven on that why driveway that goes. The west, it goes east to west, that one right there. Is that going to be widened or is it gonna?
Yeah, before it was about twenty feet wide, so yeah, before it was about twenty feet wide, so you're right, it was pretty tight. Uh now we are proposing it to be um a minimum twenty-four feet wide.
Okay, that though, that was one of my concerns that when I drove the site. Notice how narrow it gets there, especially by the municipal garage, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, yeah, it is. Um if you would look at the existing conditions plan and compare it to the new plan, you'll notice that. It has been um increased uh the width by at least four feet.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Um we we have submitted our plan to um Lanta, which I believe is the Lehigh and Northampton. Transportation Association. Sorry, um and um they they provided some comments. Um just basically, they just wanted better, a little bit better circulation within our site, so we added some sidewalk, or we're going to add some sidewalks to our site. Uh such that um patients or uh residents who might park on the far left-hand side are able to easily. Access the bus stop there. Um they didn't have any other comments than that, so we we added some sidewalk. Um we also submitted our plan to the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. Um we have not received any any review yet from them. Um I guess, as far as zoning is concerned, I guess, did anybody have any questions as far as the the plan itself? You know, what we're really proposing here? No, okay. All right, so as far as zoning goes, um there were some comments. From the township um that due to its non-conforming use um and continuing the non-conforming use as a skilled nursing facility. Um there there were, there's a criteria in there that. If we, that we cannot provide an addition that's over twenty-five percent of the usable floor area of the existing main facility. Uh as an addition, so the existing facility is approximately two hundred and fifty thousand square feet of usable floor area. And the uh the new addition is one hundred and forty-one thousand square feet, so obviously, that is more, a little bit more than fifty percent. Of um of the existing facility, so we are going to be seeking a variance for that. Um I I can work with um Mr. Adams in the in the zoning board to uh to address that. Uh there's a couple other ones as far as building height, uh building height. Um the minute, the maximum is fifty feet. I believe our building, um the new addition's a little bit over sixty, sixty-five maybe. Um but however, I mean, I just like to, you know, say that the existing D wing of the building is over eighty feet high. So we're not, we're not exceeding the existing buildings height. We're we're just going to be over the um. What what the code requires, I guess. Um we we also submitted um a plan to Lower McConge. I got ahold of their planning department. Um Lower McConge Township just said, hey, send the plan and re- request a waiver from plan review, so. We had sent a letter uh requesting plan review from them. Um I have not heard back yet. They needed to talk to their board supervisors and their solicitor to. Determine what um we would need to do moving forward to either receive that waiver or any type of. Um you know, maybe going in front of their board to kind of discuss what we're doing. Uh no improvements from this site are actually located in Lower McConge. However, um the the whole property, you know, a portion of it is located in Lower McConge, so that has to be hashed out with that township as well. Um. I think that's, that's the bit, uh pretty much it, I think. At all I can, I mean, as far as landscaping, you know, we we went through the code and we we provided um, you know, parking lot trees. Um landscaping island trees, uh some buffering for the parking area in front there on Dorney Park Road. Um. But uh yeah, so we're complying to at least the minimum for the for the landscaping there. Um. Yeah, I think that's uh that's pretty much all I have for now. Um does anybody have any questions as far as? The anticipated use, um what what um you know, for zoning, planning in general?
Okay, so right now you're just giving us an an overview, and then you're going to take, take the comments that you received and and uh. Go, go forward with that.
Yeah, there were a number of comments, a lot of a lot of cosmetic things in nature, but then also some technical um as well. Uh we received geotechnical comments for uh infiltration basin for stormwater management. Uh we received comments from the engineering department, uh Mr. Uh Tony, uh Talarita, and uh. Um miscellaneous comments from the Sewer and Water Authority as well as the zoning department, so. Basically, I I I am presenting to you tonight, um just to kind of give you guys an overview of what we're planning on doing. Uh we we didn't really anticipate any kind of action taking place tonight. Uh we still need to do a lot of work um to address some of these comments and come back here in the future. Um to move forward with this plan and, you know, ultimately see final approval.
Okay, um any other questions from from the planning commission?
I just have a general question. Um I believe that you stated that there would be same number of beds. Once this new facility is built out, is that correct?
Yeah, so over over the course of time, um there will never be any increase or decrease in beds. From what I have heard from the applicant, um Mr. Mulchany is actually on, if if you would want to speak, that's up to him. Um but it is the intent of the county to have net zero beds after. The conversion, I guess, of the existing main facility to the new addition in the end. Over, it could be over a course of a number of years uh between the different phases of, you know, phasing out the existing facility, but. That is the intent, that is correct.
So I was just curious, and maybe you've got a a calculation to why, but it looks like you're increasing parking spaces by forty-four. Um have you given any thought to um potentially, you know, reducing that and leaving, you know, some some green space for residents to walk around or? You know, is there a reason why we're, you're allowing that many new parking spaces?
Um I I know that, you know, from discussions with the applicant in the county that, you know, we wanted to maximize the amount of parking. Um I'm not a hundred percent certain if they, you know, ha- have had um a hardship on the amount of parking they had in the past. But they just wanted the most parking as possible. Um it was not because of any increase in the tenants or anything like that of any nature. Um but more or less, just that was the intent of my applicant to do as much as possible um basically for now. Um but we could definitely entertain the idea of reducing the amount of parking spaces. Um we called, uh one thing was is that we would need a zoning variance right now for having some parking pretty close to the Dorney Park Road right away. Um if we remove like two or three parking spaces there, we wouldn't have to go for a variance, so I do believe that is what we're going to do there. So that there's a couple anyway, but as far as the the rest of the site, yes, I mean, we can definitely look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from, questions from the planning commission?
Just one, do we, do we need a waiver?
Um.
Yes.
Oh, yes, we do. Are there any public? We will do that in, so any any public comments, questions?
Uh I've got one in the chat box, Lee Salt, thirty-seven thirty-one Manchester Road.
Yeah, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Trying new headphones tonight. Um just a couple questions. So the. The new wing that you're proposing, is that going to replace the Cedar Village Apartments?
No, no, that is not the intent.
So you're going to have the additional? So I'm still, I'm a little bit confused on how you say you're not going to have additional residents. I know you say zero bed, empty. But what about additional residents? You're increasing the size of the facility, correct?
It it will be the, yeah, so if you can see in the middle of the screen here, there's an existing facility. It kind of looks, you know, it looks like an H. With a couple wings.
Yes.
Yeah, the, so on the far right there, that is the A wing. Yep, and then to the left, it's the B wing, then you have the C wing, then the D wing, then you got a center building there as well. Um over the course of time, it is the intent of the county to phase out the beds. In that existing A wing, B wing, C wing, uh maybe maybe some in the D wing, I can't remember. Um but then convert those into assisted living apartments. And then the beds that were there are going to be basically. Going to be made up in in the new addition.
So you will be increasing occupancy eventually?
Not not by skilled nursing, but potentially by the amount of apartments in the future.
Okay, because I I was confused because you didn't, on on the plan, it doesn't show the Cedar Village Apartments and the building behind it. So that's why I wasn't sure if that was staying or not.
Yeah, so so the the extent of our improvements on the 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 bottom of this plan, that is actually where the existing parking lot ends. So we're really not extending that any further to the to plan south, which is more like the the east, I guess. Um the Cedar Apartments are further south than that. Um and are are not shown on these plans, and actually, that was a comment that was provided that we need to, we need to ship them under plans, and we will for the next time that we submit.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have is concerning the entrance that you, excuse me. Concerning the entrance on Dorney Park Road and senior part, Cedar Brook Road, that corner is a very sharp corner. Um it has some existing walls on the uh where the houses are there. Are you planning on any improvement to that intersection or? To make, I can just imagine people making left-hand turns on Dorney Park Road into there and people coming around on Cedar Brook Road. Coming from, I guess, going going west as we look at the plan here onto Dorney Park Road. And that intersection's kind of a little sketchy to, um I I didn't know if you were planning any other improvements or. Thought about making a main entrance furthermore on Dorney Park Road, so you have easier sightlines and in and outs. Onto the property.
So as I, as I mentioned before, like, it is like a five-way intersection right now, and you're right, it is very sketchy, I guess. Um we we have reduced that by one curb cut to four. So in in a sense, we are improving the situation. Um but no, we do not, we do not, are not proposing any roadway improvements as part of this project. Um but as I said previously as well, I I it is my understanding that the township. Does have part of their comprehensive plan to smooth out that curve, which I don't know if Tony would want to kind of draw. What, you know, they're kind of like anticipating here, but instead of like a right angle coming from Dorney Park to Cedar Brook there. Basically, you're going to be cutting that corner off and curving it out more, and then from there. It it would, might be the intent of having one driveway from that new curve into the Cedar Brook site. Now, that's that, that's just what I, my understanding, talking to the township engineer. Uh but we are scheduled to have a meeting here in two weeks, I believe, to kind of go over that.
Okay, thank you. The other, that one more comment that I hope you really concern your your stormwater runoff, because I do believe there's a fish hatchery. Not too far from that location, so that that the water there does stay clean, that we don't damage it all, that that hatchery and that that. Uh water, we're in that area, so.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so that is a high-quality stream. Uh we do have the trout um hatchery actually on the plans. It's actually down just to the south of that basin. It's a little square. I don't know, Tony might want to zoom in or something. Yeah, well. See it, right? Yep, right there. So, you know, we had a well-in and stream delineation done, done done by an um. Um professional ecologists and uh that we, they determined that actually is a stream right there. So because it's a high-quality stream, um one of the requirements of D D P is that we need to provide a. Hundred and fifty-foot repairing buffer off of the stream bank there, so that's why our our basin is positioned pretty far. Away from the stream, uh basically as far as we possibly can put it. Um there is a flood plain over there as well, and I know I have some comments about that um that we're addressing on our end, um but. Yeah, so I mean, we are decreasing the the rates to that area. We're decreasing the volume due due to infiltration. We're not impacting well-ins or the flood plain, and we should be maintaining the high-quality uh nature of this stream.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I've I've got Rick Mulchany from County of Lehigh on the phone. Um I think he can add something to this conversation. Rick, are you there?
Hello?
Hello? Hello?
Wow, that's a lot of feedback.
Yeah.
Rick, Rick, are you? Are you on the computer and the phone simultaneously?
Can you hear me now?
Much better.
Yes.
Okay, I don't think that was me before. But anyway, planning commissioners, thank you for hearing an overview of our our project. We we believe this is a a very good plan for the constituency that we serve. Commissioners, this is an addition of skilled nursing beds that are currently housed in our B, C, and D wings of Cedar Brook Skilled Nursing Home. The A wing that Adam was referring to earlier has already been converted. And I know Greg, in 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 your history, which you you didn't go through all of the history. There there was history here where back in the early two thousands, we converted skilled nursing beds to independent apartments. We call the A Wing Brookview. And it's a different business model than the skilled nursing. It has a completely different requirements from the Department of Health and the Centers for Medicare Medicaid Services. So in addition, I think Mr. Salt mentioned to the south of this project, there are two standalone independent living apartments, one Cedar View, which has about two hundred apartments across ten stories and Cedar Village, which is a five story facility with about fifty apartments. Commissioners, the the reality is, we know our needs going forward will be to continue to provide lower income senior housing. So our goal in this project is to reclaim our asset, the skilled nursing home. Create a new wing, relocate skilled nursing beds to the new, free up the asset, and then make a determination on our future in another phase in the future. Meaning potentially in the B wing, additional apartments. We believe our engineering shows at the most, we might have forty two additional apartments similar to the A wing, which would be part of that Brookview model. So so commissioners, today are our discussion for skilled nursing beds. And I know Mr. Salt questioned because it is somewhat confusing. We are not increasing beds for the skilled nursing facility. But in the future, as we free up our asset in the B wing and the C wing, we may look for alternative uses, could be additional office space for some county use. Or it might be independent living. Those ideas are not fleshed out yet. We're still working on a phase two plan. Before we can even get to a phase two, we need to work on phase one. I know Diane mentioned earlier about parking. That's why it is in our best opinion today that by adding as much parking as possible, it would permit us for the future to reengage the planning commission for South Whitehall Township and discuss a phase two proposition, which might be forty two apartments. Those apartments may in fact involve vehicles, not all, but many. So we're we're cognizant of of opening up the facility and the asset of Cedar Cedar Brook to provide a future that allows us to continue to serve a constituency that we believe is currently underserved. And that's seniors on low income. And in addition, without adding any skilled nursing beds. So commissioners, in a nutshell, you're seeing our phase one plan, but because we're aware that there is going to be someday a phase two plan, we're doing some prep work in advance for the the grounds and and the site for parking landscaping. Certainly, we're considering a water, sanitary, and storm sewer. So commissioners, that gives you, I think, a nutshell of where we're going. We believe it's a great location, close for residents' families, as you know, to visit off the highway. It's a perfect location. It's adjacent to our our Cedar Creek West, Leehead County Sports Fields Complex, which is is an incredible facility. We complement each other in that respect. And we're hoping that we can work through the additional planning and zoning questions you may have constructively and collaboratively to keep the project moving forward. Because we believe it is a project that benefits the entire county, but it certainly benefits South Whitehall Township as well. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions, commissioners. If if you need and want questions in the future time, we're certainly available to answer any questions that you might have. And thanks for hearing me out tonight.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Any any questions for Rick? Okay. If that's it.
Just so I, if I can jump in, I had muted all the callers in that during that feedback. So if there's any other callers that have comments, I'll open up the phones and I'll probably find out if there's feedback on a specific one. So I'm just going to kind of go through the list. Caller one, if you have any comments. Caller three, if you have any comments. Caller eight. Caller ten. Oh, there's caller three. And caller eleven. At this point, I think I will close the callers, because that seems to be what's generating the most feedback. So we'll open it up again at at the public comment time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That that I think completes for this. We need to. Thank you for the presentation. We because we need a the applicant to grant us a waiver from the timeframe for this project in order to in order to table it. Either Rick or?
Yeah, Adam, can you speak for Rick?
Sure, yeah, I can do that. Yeah, we do. We are requesting additional time to be able to for the planning commission to recommend an approval to the board. I don't do I have to do a specific date or anything at this time?
No, 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 no. It basically waives the timeframe for six months, basically says that you will resubmit a revised plan within six months. If you don't, your plan will be deemed null and void. So.
Perfect. Yeah, we definitely plan on submitting way before that, but that's adequate time for sure.
All right, I'll I'll send you the form tomorrow.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will take the plan under advisement. We need a motion for that?
I moved.
Second.
Motion by Brian Height, second by Diane Kelly. Roll call vote. David Dunbar.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tobe.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, everybody, for your time and looking forward to working with you guys and getting this plan started.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now move on to, by the way, I I we didn't do the comprehensive plan update summary. We'll do that after this next one, if that's all right with you, Dave. So we'll move now to nine hundred South Hillview Road. Rezoning from R three to R five rezoning request twenty twenty dash five oh two. Request for rezoning review and start out with staff presentation by Greg.
Okay, I I believe we probably have a lot of people here for this, so I'll go a little more in depth. This is an application to rezone the portion of the property at nine hundred South Hillview Road. The subject property consists is currently zoned R three low density residential. The plan proposes to change the zoning for a three point eight eight nine five four acre portion of the property along the northern edge of the fourteen point eight nine five 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 acre parcel from R three to R five medium density residential. Pasaco Equities is currently the owner. Abra Development Ten LP is the equitable owner and applicant. A little previous consideration. At the at their November fourth twenty twenty meeting, the Board of Commissioners reviewed a motion to advertise the hearing for the zoning ordinance amendment and determine that the draft ordinance should be revised and returned to Planning Commission for their review and comment, which is what we're doing tonight. On October fifteenth of this year, the applicant submitted a draft ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to rezone nine hundred South Hillview Road, the the South Whitehall portion. The draft ordinance was transmitted to the LVPC for the thirty day review on October twenty first. On September seventeenth, the planning commission recommended that the Board of Commissioners table the applicant's request to rezone the property pending the adoption of the comprehensive plan update. Going further back, August fifth twenty twenty, the Board of Commissioners directed the applicant to submit an application to the to the planning commission to rezone, which they did on August seventh. Going back to July fifteenth, the Board of Commissioners initially heard the request to rezone nine hundred Hillview Road. The Commissioners directed staff to review and provide comment, which they did, and that moved everything forward. Going back to two thousand six, Pasaco Equity submitted an application for major plan two thousand six one oh eight Hillview Farms. This plan was recommended by the planning commission, but was not advanced to the Board of Commissioners and was closed down in twenty seventeen due to an activity. And finally, going back to March fifteenth, two thousand six, the Board of Commissioners approved ordinance eight twenty eight, which rezoned this very parcel from RR Rural Residential to R three medium density residential. The comments. Township Engineer, their comments are contained in Mr. Talarida's review dated September eleventh twenty twenty. His comments pertain to traffic procedure, stormwater management, and outside agency reviews. The water and sewer engineers have not made comment by at this time. Public Works commented in their review dated August seventeenth twenty twenty. They note that township cannot provide water to this tract. The comments of the Township Fire Marshal and Public Safety Commission have not been received at this time. The comments of the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission are contained in their review letter dated November thirteenth twenty twenty. They note that the rezoning is generally consistent with the regional plan and recommends alternately to consider amending the R three zoning district to add assisted living residents as a special exception use. So basically, the Community Development Department recommends that the planning commission consider the potential impact of the proposal, what it could have on roads, sewer facilities, water supplies, schools, surrounding land uses, and other public service facilities when comparing the proposed R five medium density residential zoning to the current R three low density residential zoning designations. In addition, the members should ask whether the physical characteristics of the site, i.e. soil slopes, wetlands, woodlands, place limitations on the proposal or adversely impact the proposal itself. So I'll leave it at that unless somebody wants to add any more from the staff review.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. McNair, Blake Marles, for the applicant. I'm here with our entire design team tonight. I'll fill you in on where we are since we were last before the planning commission. And you suggested that this await review by the comprehensive and for the comprehensive plan overall review. Because this project will either proceed with or without development on South Whitehall. We took the proposed rezoning back to the Board of Commissioners and asked them whether they wanted to wait for the comprehensive plan review to occur, and they determined that they would like to proceed to a hearing. And that's why this is back to you now. In terms of the other things that have happened, you recall that we've been here several times because we were developing this plan in layers. We first came in with a concept. We tried to figure out where the buildings would go. Because it's zoned in two different townships, we've had to go back and forth between Lower McCongee and South Whitehall, the bulk of the projects in Lower McCongee. We received a favorable recommendation for conditional use approval from the Lower McCongee Planning Commission this month. So we'll be proceeding to their Board of Commissioners for conditional use approval in January. And as part of that discussion, we we did what we indicated to you that we had planned to do in the future anyway. And that is at least did a preliminary review of traffic issues to determine the traffic impact, because that seemed to be the primary issue that everybody was concerned about. We have Pete Terry on in in attendance tonight who can summarize that for you. But in in summarizing it, I would point out to you that the numbers and the information he'll give you relates to the entire site where the bulk of the traffic is coming from what's in Lower McCongee Township, since the assisted living facility won't have a whole lot of traffic. All that's being proposed in South Whitehall is the assisted living facility. And the independent living buildings are all in Lower McCongee Township where they're conditionally permitted uses. So with that, Bill Erdman or or Pete, would you like to, or I guess, Bill, first of all, would you like to add anything to that before we ask Pete to make a few comments?
No, I think you covered it pretty well, Blake, unless there's questions. I think we can move on to Pete discussing traffic.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. This is Pete Terry with Benchmark Civil Engineering. We prepared the traffic impact study based on a request from Lower McCongee Township. We collected traffic data along Crestler Road, including at the intersection with Hillview. With this data, we analyze the operational conditions based on three different access scenarios. Those scenarios involve just a single access point onto Hillview Road, a combination of an emergency access through the site towards Crestler road as well. So with those scenarios, we evaluated the operational conditions. And the way we do that is we we determine a level of service. Level of service ranges from A, which is very good, very low delay, less than fifteen or less than ten seconds of delay for for turning movements at unsignaled intersections. We 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 looked at these scenarios. We looked at the intersections and what we found is all the intersections work at either level of service A or a level of service B. So they're very low amount of delay. This would be considered very good operation. We analyze the site driveway intersection onto Hillview Road. This intersection actually worked at level of service A during each of the evaluation periods. So that would be the opening year in twenty twenty two and a five year projection to twenty twenty seven. Those levels of service were experienced during what is today the AM roadway peak and PM roadway peak. And then we also looked at a mid afternoon peak, which would correspond to a shift change at a facility like this as well as the school traffic if there was a school bus operations in effect. We collected the data in We collected the data in September. We went through a process to adjust that traffic volume to represent pre-COVID times. We also added in background tra- traffic growth as required by PennDOT. Uh, and again, with all of this traffic, what we found was that the, uh, level of service was a level of service B or better. Each of the study intersection. Um, more specifically, the South Whitehall Township. Uh, if you look at the traffic it is coming to and going from South Whitehall Township, uh, leaving the site and heading, uh, northeast, I guess you would say. Um, in the morning peak hour, we had five trips. In the PM peak hour, and again, that's between, uh, four and six, one hour between four and six. We would have fourteen trips exiting the site. And during the afternoon peak, there were twenty seven trips exiting the site headed toward South Whitehall Township. And in a similar manner, coming from South Whitehall Township into the site, we had nine trips in that morning peak hour, fourteen in the afternoon, or sorry, sixteen in the afternoon and fourteen during that uh, roadway peak, the shift change in the afternoon. So without question, this is a, a relatively low generator of trips. Um, there's a, a question as to, uh, how many, what difference, um, having an R three zone or an R five zone would make. We've done some preliminary analysis, not included in the traffic study, that show um, based on the size of the parcel in South Whitehall Township and the zoning difference, you, you really would not be able to generate a significantly higher number of trips with any use, permitted use uh, as compared to what is proposed with this development. Um, a- again, this is a preliminary analysis that we did. We can certainly provide this during land development if there's, uh, any question as to that. Um, are there specific issues I would, that need to be addressed?
I, I for one, uh, would like to know what the worst case scenario for the reason the high intense use traffic counts would be. You know, we have to look at this as a rezoning. I understand that the intent is for a, a a facility like you're proposing, but we have to look at it comprehensively, you know, so that I would like even if they're de minimis, I would like to know that oh, I can justify my votes or against.
A- absolutely, and, and Bill, maybe you can chime in on the number of units that we considered possible. I believe it was a townhouse use that was the, 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 the most dense traffic use, and I believe we were correct me if I'm wrong, was it eight to twelve units?
Yeah, uh, let me, let me chime in on that, Brian. That's a good question, and I, I can understand why that's a consideration. The property is very, very unusually laid out in terms of the ability to put any intense, particularly residential development on it. It's a very long, narrow property. By the time you put the rights of way and the various setbacks, the number of residential units you can put on this property is extremely limited. In fact, quite frankly, I would seriously question as an engineer whether somebody would even undertake residential development on this property, given its proximity to the highway, and again, the severe restrictions because of the setbacks. Uh, you may not even be able to get a double fronted roadway through there, which tends to be very expensive, so the number is going to be extremely low. Uh, I, I wouldn't be concerned about a very, very intensive residential develop on that, given the, uh, configuration of the property and again, primarily the, the setbacks, both front and rear, the right of way that would be required for a road and so forth. It's just, you're just not going to get that many residential units on it.
Any any more questions? Uh, Tony, you had some questions on this also, on the traffic study?
Um, we, we, we had our comments. We provided them in our letter to the applicant and, uh, to everyone. Um, you know, I guess, uh, w- we noted that those, the intersection in South Whitehall were not analyzed, um, like we said to, to A in our comments, so we just we're wondering if there's any, uh, if there was any council, anything done for all the trips leaving north. I know you, uh, you mentioned there's twenty seven, twenty four. But I believe, if I'm not mistaken, you had pretty close to fifty fifty split going north and south, so you know, you, you did a couple of intersections in, uh, Lower McCongee Township. We're wondering if there is any consideration, especially as you went north towards Lincoln for what that intersection does, or if there's anything that, um, any contribution, anything that this development contribute to that, to the backup that happens because of Hamilton at Lincoln. Uh, that was our one comment. I'm sorry.
If, if I can respond to that, a- at this time, because those volumes are as low as they are, they're far below the threshold that PennDOT would have to include additional intersections, um, in a traffic study. If it's necessary in land development to evaluate another intersection, that's certainly a possibility we could do at that stage.
That's fine. Like I said, there's, there's two others, um, you know, the Planning Commission has a letter if we can, if you would like to speak of, we saw some issues with turning templates, things like that, but, um, yeah, we're, you know, we're able to discuss at the Planning Commission, would like to discuss our entire letter. That's fun.
Question I have is, um, is brought up about, um, WB sixty seven turning templates. Um, having some issues with new ring, is that? What is the truck size for deliveries? What would be the truck size for deliveries, um? Cause it looks like the WB sixty seven, um, having issues turning.
I- if I could add to that, yeah, my name's Abraham Atia. Uh, I'm the owner of Manners at the Valley. Our, our, our typical, uh, trucks that come in are are food deliveries that are prepared from Parkland Manor, gonna be in a, a twelve foot minivan. We bring them in three times a day. And, uh, also you'll get, uh, fifteen foot trucks that deliver uh, gloves and, and miscellaneous supplies, bed sheets that come to the facility, fifteen, eighteen foot box trucks. Garbage trucks come in, uh, three times a week, come in the evening. We do not have any tractor trailers, cause I, I, I listened to your earlier discussion. You're worried about the turning radius. And we don't have any tractor trailers come to any of our facilities. It just doesn't happen. We're, we're a small personal care home. So, uh, that, that radius, that curve, you know, it's not going to be a problem for any of our deliveries.
Okay, thank you. That, that was my thought. I, I, I wasn't thinking tractor trailers are delivered there.
Okay, any other questions from the Planning Commission? Uh, did you all complete your presentation, just to be?
Yeah, yes, we did, Mr. McNair. Uh, we, we didn't, we wouldn't, didn't want to rehash the entire thing again because you'd heard it. Uh, we just wanted to bring you up to date on the things that have changed since we last saw you.
Yeah, Blake, Blake, if I could just jump in on one thing, uh, there's been discussions and, and obviously the the crux of this whole thing is whether this goes forward independent of the comprehensive plan. And I know in the past there have been discussions about the comprehensive plan, and I understand the current schedule is to have it by next spring. One of the things that George Kenny brought up at the Commissioners' meeting that kind of reminded me to think about this. The comprehensive plan doesn't give us the zoning. And his projection, and I, I, I think I can speak for him because I recall him saying, the zoning could be another year, perhaps two years later. So the delay that has been characterized before, when there's discussion about doing this in conjunction with a comprehensive plan is not the whole story. So when you think about it from the standpoint of the change, I think you need to consider it could be out there a year and a half to two years from now before the actual zoning, if it's not in conjunction with the comprehensive plan. I, I think that's an important consideration.
Yeah, and we want to respect the comprehensive plan. Look, that was a great decision. Your last decision was respectful. We weren't mad about it. But then when we did our research looking at timeframes, this thing could go out eighteen months, two years. I heard stories in South Whitehall where you, uh, comprehend, you approved the zoning amendments, and then they were never legally reinforced and along delays, and we're a good positive use in the township. We serve the geriatric residents in South Whitehall Township in Lower Mac that basically are leaving and go to We Mayes and go to other municipalities. So we're a community service. Parkland Manor currently, the exact same facility is fifty percent occupied. And, you know, I'd say by the end of this year, maybe early spring, we'll be, we'll be a hundred percent occupied. We'd like to get Lower, uh, McCongee Manor moving along. It's a one story building. It's, it's exactly like what we built at the West End Racquetball Club. It's duplicate, duplicate building, duplicate care. And you haven't had any complaints about traffic, noise, tub trucks, nothing. I mean, we, we, we are we consider ourselves a, a, a model resident, uh, community, uh, developer in South Whitehall. So we'd like you, uh, to get favorable recommendation this time, understanding the traffic impact, which you have a lot of neighbors that came out at the last meeting, and they were scary. They were all upset. All annoyed and yelling and this, and we agree that there are traffic issues on Hillview. There's speeding going on, and Peter didn't mention that. We, he videoed speeding, like it's, it's cool. The cameras actually track what goes on. There are issues. I, I don't want our residents pulling out of that, that hill view getting run over either, so whatever Lower Mac does or whatever they recommend about the speeding going on there. You know, something that, you know, we consider working with the township to correct the speeding, that it's dark. And there's issues with that road, but would, but our traffic impact that Peter Terry presented, he's a professional engineer, said all of the intersection are gonna be B, B, you know, so that's why we're back. We want you to understand a, a, a traffic engineer did the study and realized that there's not going to be a negative impact in that community on all your intersections, so we feel that, uh, it's gonna be a good project for South Whitehall and a good rateable, and it's taking care of the elderly population in the township, and also the comprehensive. We have our planning commission recommended favorable to this, this particular site and use. And also, all municipalities need to serve the baby boomers, uh, and all the geriatric people that are aging in, in our community, so we hope the board considers giving us a favorable recommendation moving forward, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, then we will, uh, if there's nothing else from the Planning Commission, we will move on to the public comments and questions and see where we go.
I, I, I would like to, um,
Okay.
Um, the public comments, if you could, um, indicate what township you live in, because I know the last meeting, there's a lot of confusion, um, who are South Whitehall Township residents and who were Lower McCongee, uh, residents, um. I, I would like to provide some comments too. I, I, I personally don't want to keep kicking the, going down the road. I would like to move forward with the decision, a recommendation, whether it's yes or no. Um, I just don't want to keep rehashing the same items over and over. Um, over the past month, I, I did look at the comp plan input that was provided and this, uh, part of the township that our township residents did specifically indicate to provide medium density population growth and medium density employment growth in this area. So that was input from our residents that specifically indicated that, and this project is a medium density residential project, so, um, I do want to state that point, um. In terms of planning, typically, um, if you do have a bit more dense, uh, use, it's makes sense to have it by a, a highway opposed to in the middle of the township, which will cause people to drive from the highway through the entire township and, uh, cause more traffic congestion, so makes sense that it's right next to a highway. Um, in my opinion, uh, uh, senior living facilities are low impact. Um, in terms of, you know, impact, uh, with crime, seniors typically do not, uh, um, it can typically are not in, uh, negative impact in terms of crime, in terms of violent crime. In terms of impact to the, the school district, um, they, uh, pay their taxes and it's not a strength to the school district resources because the senior aged residents do not have, um, children that are of school age. Um, so the, the, the impact that would be felt is, um, ambulances, um. Now, this site is right next to a hospital, so it would not necess- necessitate the use of an ambulance going through the entire township. Um, my understanding is the ambulance drivers learn not to have their sirens glaring when they need to go to the senior living facility, so, um, I, I did want to, to make those comments, um.
Thank you, David. Um, a- any other, any other comments from the Planning Commission before we move on to, uh, the public comments?
I do.
Oh, Diane?
Um, this is a follow-up. Regarding that comprehensive plan and residents' decisions for this area, um, I can tell you that I personally attended the comprehensive plan workshops last year, the exercise where, um, the dots were put on a map. Um, I have a little bit of a background, obviously, in planning. I can tell you that we were, were not really, it wasn't explained that putting a dot on the map meant an upzone. Um, it was, in my opinion, the way that it was explained to me was it's a potential for a change, something that the township would look at, uh, as a whole, and I, I actually had some residents, uh, over the last couple of months, um, call me and say the same thing, that they uh, putting dots there for future growth didn't necessarily mean this particular plot. It was more of the general area um, around the hospital for redevelopment. So, you know, I think there's, there's certainly room for interpretation there. And I don't know how many of the residents in that area, you know, whether we, as a township, had any workshops in that area, and if they were involved, that I don't know the answer to either. Um, and then one other thing that does concern me about the results of that is that, um, at times when we did these surveys, they were out in public forums such as, um, at Movies in the Park. And we were not necessarily only taking South Whitehall residents. We were um, just taking general comments. I know they were trying to, but there's, there's room for a little bit of, um, skewing of the actual residents' wants in those areas. So those are all things that, that I think about, and as we look at this in the context of the entire township, um, it's certainly something to consider that dots on a map did not equal a particular plot of plan being, um, rezoned or upzoned.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Any, any other comments from the Planning Commission?
I, I did have one question for the applicant. Comparing this to Parkland Manor, uh, I'm a neighbor of Parkland Manor. And I want to know how many are the, the same size buildings in both, you know, what Parkland Manor is built now, not the tower that hasn't been built yet, but the, you know, the single, the single story facility? And how many residents do they have in there now? And I have a comment when I get that answer, if they have that answer.
Yes, sir, Brian. It's a, we, my architect's online, and we duplicated that exact same building. I actually stayed a lot of architectural fees too, so we, we already designed the building, that, that one story building is gonna be exactly like the one over there, except the, the wing at Parkland Manor currently has a little vestibule between it, but this is gonna be one building. There was a phase one and phase two. This is all connected now. It's one big building. And the only little difference here, this one's gonna have a little lower level because of the grades pitch. We're gonna have a little lower, uh, the grades drop on this site, so we're gonna put a lower level, maybe have some activity area there with a fun room underneath, so uh, but, but you, you won't, you couldn't tell a difference between buildings. Now, the, our second building, again, the building I got approved, uh, the, the Parkland Manor, okay, was eighty-four units. And it's the exact same building I'm building in McCongee, because that's already designed. I'm saving my, my architect. I don't my architect can't build me twice for the same building, so the approved building, uh, independent living at Parkland Manor is gonna be right next door at Parkland Manor, I mean, on McCongee Manor. And then the assisted living building is a duplicate of the independent living building, same size. And then the assisted living building is a duplicate of the independent living building, same size square footage, but it's per, once. So we're gonna have one personal care, one independent living, and then the one story building is gonna serve memory care and care plus. So it's more of a continual care, uh, community. We're developing, we're, we've realized, you know, the hardest thing, and you guys probably realize this with your parents, and you may, is when a husband and a wife, okay, go into a facility and one personal care facility together, right? And one deteriorates. It's so painful. You've been married for fifty, sixty years. Your spouse has memory problems and, 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 and you gotta separate. Can you imagine that after fifty years of living with them? You can't live with them anymore. Your spouse has dementia. So you could live on the, in the assisted living building here and your wife is in the memory care facility. You could walk over and visit her every day, have lunch with her every day. You could still see her. Cause you're, you're, you're walking distance. So we designed these three buildings and that's how Parkland Manor is ultimately gonna be designed. We are gonna add a third building four or five years from now, whenever we get the, the, the new building built and filled up. And we're gonna start construction there in a couple of months. So this continual care community. So the two buildings that I have approved in McConge are gonna be personal care and independent living. This assisted living building is memory care and, and personal care, but, but it's a higher acuity. It's people that are, are bound to wheelchairs or bound with walkers that are real, that need a lot of help. So, you know, you know, it seems trivial, but it's the most important part of our business is our, is our, our, our good care, our extra care, where people need, you know, how, they need more care, two, three hours of care per day. And they don't wanna go to a nursing home. So our, our personal care, this one story building, our rates, our private rates are forty-nine hundred dollars for a private room. If you go to, to a nursing home like Country Meadows, they'll charge eight to nine thousand dollars for the same thing we're talking forty-nine hundred dollars for. We make a ten percent margin on our profit. So there's a lot of people in South Whitehall that can't afford to go to a nursing home when they're, when they're close to a nursing home care. And they get gouged by the nursing homes. So we, we compete with nursing homes. We say this one story building serves people that are, that are borderline going to a nursing home, but, but, but can, can operate on the personal care license. So we are a community service. We give good rates. We save people money from going into a nursing home. So the, the life of this building is on the, your, your planning commission, we'd like you to approve this. You don't realize it until when your, when your parent needs care and they fall and break their hip. And then the, the hospital says, okay, go for nursing rehab. And then the nursing rehab at Country Meadows or, or, uh, any other facility say, well, your mom needs nursing. Ten thousand dollars. And you look and say, what? Ten thousand a month? No, bring her, bring her to McConge Manor, at Parkland Manor for forty-nine hundred dollars a month. That's where we win. That's our product. You don't need to go to a nursing home and get gouts when you could be at McConge Manor or Parkland Manor and charge a personal care rate. It's the same level of care as state nursing. And it's good quality of food. So that's our product line. And we, we hope you guys understand this. And, and, uh, this, it's very important for us to get this project. I mean, we're gonna build the other two buildings, whether you approve it or not. But just remember that couple where one deteriorates. And they gotta leave McConge Manor because there's not one in South Whitehall. They're gonna have to go to our other parkland or another facility. You separate the two and it's, it's the worst emotional experience in your life when your spouse starts deteriorating. I'm telling you, we see it firsthand every day. It's something that and, and, and the concept is, you know, when you're planning commission, when you support a, a geriatric facility, okay, it's on your record forever. You supported an assisted living, a, a geriatric facility. It's like, yes, you're doing the right thing. If you vote us down tonight, I'll accept that, but please vote. If you're gonna vote us down, give us a good reason why you're voting us down. But you know, are residents gonna drive out the public at eighty, eighty-five year olds? Are they gonna be driving around and running people over? No. None of, none of the people in this building will be driving cars. Zero. The only people coming and going are gonna be staffs.
Okay, Brian, did you get your, your, your answer to the information you needed?
And I can clarify that the, that the building in South Whitehall Township is, has one hundred beds in it and it has the same number of rooms as the Parkland Manor building does. So the intensity of use, the intensity of traffic generated, if you were to compare the, the one story building, which is going to be constructed at McConge Manor, uh, on the South Whitehall Township rezoned parcel, it would have the same traffic and, uh, the same impact as the building, which is already constructed at Parkland Manor, uh, in the township.
And, and that's why I asked how many residents are currently, what's, what's the percentage of your occupancy at Parkland Manor right today?
Right, today it's twenty-eight. Here's a, here's another story for you. So we, we designed Parkland, uh, Parkland Manor for a hundred and twenty beds, right? We, I'm gonna round up sixty rooms, right? And, and right now of the, uh, so we were expecting everybody to take shared rooms at Parkland Manor. But now there's only two people shared out of that twenty. Everybody's taking private rooms. So our actual count at Parkland Manor, we were expecting a hundred and twenty beds. When we're at full capacity, it's gonna be sixty to sixty-five. That's because everybody's taking private rooms. The same thing may happen in McConge Manor here. We only, Gene, how many rooms are we building here? Is it fifty-eight rooms, right?
We have, we have fifty-eight rooms, which consists of forty-two doubles and sixteen singles. So the forty-two doubles provide us with eighty-four beds and the sixteen singles would give us sixteen beds for a total of a hundred beds here.
Well, that gives us, uh, Brian, that gives us double occupancy, but the people and,
and what I'm trying to get at is I drive by your facility twice a day, every day. Sometimes more. And the only people I ever see driving in and out of there is employees or South Whitehall Police or Sutronian. And the impact, if you're at fifty percent now, I can't see in that much greater until the tower is built. And that's a whole different animal. But I, I was trying to compare
Yes.
this facility in, uh, Parkland Manor, South Whitehall to what we're, what your intent is to do at McConge. So I'm trying to be helpful to you, or helpful to the community by explaining that I don't see the traffic impacts at this one story facility. I don't know what's coming with the tower. I can't see it being that much different than even the Cedar Brook that we looked at earlier today. So basically I wanted to get an idea in my head, how full you are at Parkland Manor, cause I see that traffic every day. Like, you know, I'm a neighbor. So, and.
I know. And I know you like sidewalks too, Brian. I know that. So we.
I think we all do, uh, on this board. So, but thank you for, for that answer. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any, anybody else from the planning commission before we get to the public comments?
Bill, I just, I just wanna say I'm back on the telephone. I messed up my computer somehow and I have not been with you for a little while.
Okay.
So I, I missed most of the recent discussion.
Okay, Dave. Thank you. Um, all right, uh, then we will move on to the, um,
Bill.
Yes.
Can I have a comment?
Sure.
Okay. I, I did wanna address Diane's comment. Um, she, she is correct. Uh, when we did the map exercises, the intent is not to immediately indicate a zoning difference. Um, and that's, that's an important thing to draw from the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does not dictate zoning. It is merely a directional on where we should be looking, where the residents want us to look at. Um, and certainly not specific properties in mind. So the comprehensive plan should be viewed as not something that tells us exactly where zoning should be changed, but as gives us locations to, as to where we can think about rezoning. So I, I did wanna say that she was correct. That is, that is what the comprehensive plan is supposed to do. I, I also do wanna point out that although it is within your purview to wait for the zoning ordinance and thus the zoning map to be changed, which, uh, Mr., um, I, I, Bill Erdman was, uh, correct in saying that could be a year or two. Um, if I recall, the, the idea with this and at least two other rezoning requests that have been tabled um, was to get the comprehensive plan in front of you and utilize the comprehensive plan to direct you for those specific rezoning requests. That can be done immediately after the comprehensive plan is adopted. Um, there's, there's no reason for you to have to wait until the full zoning ordinance is readopted to do that. Now, of course, that's up to your whim when, when it gets there. Um, but there's, there's no reason to wait after that. So those are my two comments.
Great. Thank you. Um, moving on to, uh, the public comments. I, David, you've been keeping track, but I don't know.
Yeah. Go all the way back up to the top.
So we have after Rick, um, the next person. That's when we started. So we have Richard Schaller. If you'd like to speak.
Yeah. Uh, I'm a basic, basic question I have is, has South Whitehall Township?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can you give your address and whether you're a resident of South Whitehall or somewhere else?
Eleven seventy South Hillview Road, resident of Lower McConge.
Thank you.
But within the required distance to be notified of the proposed subdivision or, or project. My basic question is, did South Whitehall Township do a traffic study? I know Lower McConge has, but did South Whitehall Township do a traffic study to determine the impact that the traffic's gonna have on South Whitehall residents?
Peter Terry, I, I believe you indicated, um, some information about traffic entering that would be entering South Whitehall. If you could reiterate that information.
Absolutely. So we, we've, uh, identified that essentially fifty percent of the traffic uh, will be oriented towards South Whitehall Township from this development. Um, to answer the question, we have not done specific capacity analysis on any of the intersections in South Whitehall Township at this time. Uh, essentially those trips that I identified earlier in my testimony would be below the level that typically would study intersections, um, for their capacity. The traffic study does discuss some of the safety issues and, uh, potentially, uh, large vehicle issues. Uh, again, this facility will not have those large vehicles. Yeah, tractor trailers will not utilize this facility.
Okay. Um, so that, that's the status of the, um, traffic studies, uh.
The other, I have several other issues related to the traffic. Uh, I guess, I don't know if you're aware, but Lower McConge Township is recommending that the entrance for, for this subdivision be lined up with Nonna Maker Lane. Okay. And part of Mon, Nonna Maker Lane is in South Whitehall Township. Uh, but most of Mon, Mon, Nonna Maker Lane, I call it a lane because it's only a little bit wider and one car. And a lot of residents in South Whitehall Township and also Lower McConge Township walk that, walk that lane and, and bike that lane. So if they're gonna line up, uh, the entrance to this division, subdivision with Nonna Maker Lane and, and the traffic coming out of there, if they're gonna go south, they're gonna go down Nonna Maker Lane. And you're creating a very dangerous situation with Nonna Maker Lane. And actually, Nonna Maker Lane would probably have to be redone, widened and rebuilt to accommodate the traffic that's gonna, it's gonna be going south on that in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Um, is that all of your comments?
No, I have other, I have some other comments too, also relating to traffic. Uh, I don't know whether the planning commission ever drove out and parked next to the entrance that's being proposed on the Hillview. But if you do that, and if you look towards Cressler Road, you'll see that your line of sight is, is, is interfered with by telephone poles alongside of Hillview Road, which is very narrow road. And it's, and if you also look towards the bridge, towards South Whitehall, your, your line of sight is interfered with by the concrete, uh, buttments and the fence from the bridge. So I'll just give you a quick experience that I had this past week. I pulled out of my driveway uh, on Hillview, going towards the bridge, going towards South Whitehall. And I was doing about, I got up to about twenty-five miles an hour and a black SUV came flying by me. Uh, in, in an no passing zone, he's flying by me. And by the time he came back into the lane, he was right by the entrance that you proposed to build for this, for this development. So my point is, I think you're gonna be making, if you approve this and, and the entrance is made on, on Hillview, you're gonna be creating a very dangerous situation for traffic and for people coming in and out of that development, especially if they're elderly.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll go to the next.
Next we have Mark Walter.
Yes, um, thank you very much for, uh, hearing us out tonight. I, I know this has been back and forth. I just wanna ask a few things about the traffic study myself. I started reading.
I'm sorry. Can you give your address and
Oh.
your, where, where, if you're upper McConge or lower McConge or, um, South Whitehall?
Yes. Um, it's three eight seven seven High Point Drive and I live in, uh, South Whitehall Township.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I read in the initial letters, um, I guess on your website, South Whitehall Township's website tonight from, um, Mr. Attia's attorneys and, and he posted three reasons to, to try and rush this through. Um, one being that it was already, um, considered to be rezoned, but that was from an rural to an R three, um, not to, uh, medium density R five. Um, second point was simply for a time constraint issue and, and I don't think without consideration to the impact of traffic, uh, on the South Whitehall Township side, that this should be rushed through. Um, I've heard a few discussions tonight saying that the property that is being talked about on the site, South Whitehall Township side, um, won't have much impact. And, and in all honesty, I wouldn't disagree per se with the residents in that, um, living facility that he has in his continuum of care. The problem being is that that is not the, uh, on, the, the proposed entrance from, uh, Lower McConge Township, um, was to be gated, I believe locked and gated down on Learway and the main entrance being on Hillview. Uh, so all of those residents, um, and all of the traffic, which was estimated by, uh, the expert of the traffic study, um, Peter, I believe, um, stated there'd be eight hundred some cars coming out of that facility. If you go to Google and you Google anywhere around the Lehigh Valley to that site, um, it's gonna be bringing you through South Whitehall Township. I live on High Point and a big concern I have is the um, cut through traffic that's gonna be created, especially when you talked about the, uh, truck incident on the high turn, uh, hard curve north of the uh, proposed property. And so there's a lot of cut through traffic that happens already. Um, but with regards to it, I, I, I am by no means an educated engineer, but I read the beginning part of the traffic study and there were some things that I, I noticed that were, um, confusing, misleading. It said that the posted, um, miles per hour were twenty-five miles per hour, but there's nothing posted there. There was, um, also statements that it was to be built out in twenty twenty-two, but then expect full occupancy in twenty twenty-one. Um, so I'm, I'm just questioning some of the accuracy of the, the study itself, one. Secondly, there was, um, as, uh, that gentleman previous, Richard brought up, there was no study of any impact between Lincoln and Hemlock, Hillview and High Point, Hillview and Crestview, or Hillview and Hemlock, um, whatsoever. And, and understanding that if you're talking over eight hundred cars per day, which you estimate at only fifty percent of those coming into South Whitehall Township, which could be argued would be a lot more, um, we should understand the impact of what that's gonna have before any zoning um, consideration is made to bump this up. Um, we also have noted that, and it has been stated, um, through the traffic study, that there is a serious problem with speed on that road, um, which I can attest to. I walk my children and my dogs out there every day. And the numbers that he, that were provided, that there was a few cars, twelve or twenty-four cars in a period. I have to tell you, I see that many cars on a fifteen minute walk with my children. So I, I'm, when a traffic study only does a two hour period in the morning and a two hour period in the afternoon, during a pandemic, I'm not sure how you can get true and accurate information as to the impact of what this project's gonna have on the community. Um, there's also discussion of potentially widening the road, um, and putting in sidewalks, which concerns the residents' increase in product, uh, property liability, maintenance and snow removal. Um, I also read in the traffic study that, um, there would be a, uh, fee paid to Lower McConge. Um, I also read in the traffic study that um there would be a uh fee paid to Lower McConge Township. Um, and not, again, I, I apologize for not having the proper language, but it was for like traffic impact or something. Um, but nothing was mentioned on the South Whitehall Township side. Not understanding that this may be broken down into the particular building on your prop, on, on the South Whitehall Township side, but to me, it's the entire entirety of the project being proposed. So at this point, I would like to ask that you at least postpone the approval to an R five or, or decision on proposal to an R five until um said time you can get proper information of the impact of the traffic study to be done.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're going to now limit the uh, the comments to three minutes. Because we, we need to get through this. So we're going to be timing the comments. Uh, you, you have three minutes to talk.
Excuse me, Mr. McNair, but I'd like to object to three minutes. There are more concerns about traffic and people need to voice their opinions. These are very serious objections and three minutes by no means gives anybody the chance to, to express those concerns.
We, we've heard these concerns at several of these meetings now.
Well, I've got some specific concerns according to their own studies and concerning to their own proposed that will take longer than three minutes. And I'm going to address those concerns that they've proposed and that they've studied. It will definitely take longer than three minutes, and I'd like that opportunity to do that. These are not opinion.
We're, we're going to have three, you have three minutes.
This is standard protocol with many municipalities.
And there's
We're going to start doing that.
I'm sorry, Robert Hodges.
For the community and the citizens in this community.
I'm sorry, and yet each per, each person representing the development was allowed to speak for as long as they wanted. And yet you're going to cut off the people of the township at three minutes?
That's correct. These people spoke for ten and fifteen minutes and you're going to con, you're going to constrict us to three minutes when we're the taxpayers?
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, who, who's next?
Hey, Carl, when it, it's your turn, you can have two and a half, five, three minutes because I'll just concur from you, from you. This is Karen Bartels.
Um, so next, let's try and stick to the list as they come in. Um, right now we have Carl just went, we have Joanne Markowitz.
Excuse me, I have thirty seconds there.
Joanne Markowitz.
Hi, um, good evening. First, we'd like to thank you, you for your time and commitment to South Whitehall Township and working with us. Um, so some of the things that some of the people brought up, I will not bring up again. However, I will reiterate some of the information that we were able to compile in regards to the traffic. Um, I also agree with the fact that a survey should be done, a traffic, traffic survey should be done on the South Whitehall side. Um, because a number of the reasons are, hang on. Okay. Sorry. I know, but I can't find the paper I'm looking for. Okay. Okay, by our interpretation, the traffic survey only covers from Cressler Road to the McConge Manor entrance exit on Hillview Road. What about all the traffic that would be generated? Point of interest: to assume that everyone takes the same way to work that they take home in this case is incorrect. People will take Cool Road to Hamilton for their morning commute to get to I seventy-eight and other points. And will take Hamilton to Lincoln to Hemlock to Hillview to Cressler for their evening trip home. The reason being because getting to Cressler Road from Hamilton Boulevard requires you to cross over two to three lanes of traffic during rush hour to sit at a traffic light to make a left-hand turn onto Cressler. Point of interest: if you Google directions to nine hundred Hillview Road from anywhere in Bethlehem, Schnecksville, Center City, Allentown, just to mention three areas, the directions will bring you in on the South Whitehall side across the I seventy-eight bridge. Any and all directions that utilize coming from north, south, east or west will also bring you in the South Whitehall side across the I seventy-eight bridge. So my other concern is the water runoff, the holding pond. We understand by the plan submitted to both townships that the holding pond located on the bottom northeast portion of the South Whitehall parcel has the overflow directed toward the property line of I seventy-eight. It is located within PennDOTs right away. Has Lehigh County Conservation Agency been contacted? Has DEB, DEP been contacted? This should be a very important issue for South Whitehall because Lower McConge Township has already stated that they will not allow the overflow to face Lower McConge Township. We are requesting that rezoning be tabled until PennDOT, Lehigh County Conservation Agency and the DEP have been given a chance to review the impact of this development and the water overflow, overflow, and a report has been compiled.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's the time.
Thank you.
I would like to say this is not a land development. This is a zoning, you're looking at rezoning, not a land development.
Thank you. Uh, who's next?
We have Robert Hodges, um seventeen oh seven Pens Crossing.
Excuse me, Carl Mabry, and you still didn't give me time on the floor.
You didn't you speak already?
No.
For thirty seconds and you said we get three minutes.
Um, I saw you have other comments. We'll get to you down there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So Robert Hodges. No, Robert Hodges, last call.
Yeah, sorry, I was on mute. I'll start over. Um, Mr. Erdman earlier said that there aren't going to be that many units built. Then why do we need a zoning change? Um, my other question is about this entire process uh of coming before a board. I've been watching the Board of Commissioner meetings and these planning commission meetings for about a year now. And it seems every time a developer is given an answer that they're not happy with, it just comes right back up at the next meeting. I don't understand why if they're told no, then they, then it's brought up at the next meeting again. If they're told it's going to wait for the comprehensive plan, but there it is, it's right back up the next meeting again. So they keep bringing it up over and over again, and you allow it to come up over and over again until they finally get the answer they want. And I'm guessing if you say yes to them tonight, the citizens are not going to be able to bring it up again and say, no, we're not happy with that answer. Let's revisit this. So my question is, how is it possible that when this was decided at a recent meeting, I'm not sure if it was the last meeting, that this was going to wait for the comprehensive plan? How is it possible that it's up again here tonight?
Good question.
Jennifer, do you want to take that one?
Sure. This is Jennifer Alderfer, Assistant Solicitor for the Township. And Blake, you can feel free to weigh in um at any time. But um essentially, uh, when Greg read the part at the beginning of this meeting, he indicated that this was before the Board of Commissioners um at the last meeting in November um based on a proposed ordinance that had been submitted. And it was the Board of Commissioners' decision then to send it back to the Planning Commission now for a review of that issue. So that's how we got to, to this, this point.
Okay. Uh, I guess that speaks for itself. Again, the board allowing developers to bring it up over and over again until they get the answer they want. Um, last thing I wish to say is that if you do change your mind tonight, when you had basically tabled it before, put it up to the ordinance, in the meantime, there has been a huge outcry from the public against this. And yet it looks pretty clear that you're going to vote for it tonight. So it's pretty obvious who you're working for, and it's not the public. Because if you were listening to the public, then you would table it again at least and not give the developer what they want against the outcry of the public, which you very clearly should have heard. And if you're not hearing it, then, then I don't know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next up, we have um Alec Ackerman, nine twenty-one Hillview Road.
My question is, uh, this particular parcel in South Whitehall was rezoned in twenty sixteen, I believe. Uh, Greg, you stated that early on. Uh, from Royal Residential to an R three, and my guess is it was for a development for single-family homes. Uh, and nothing was done. Uh, now we're moving it from an R three to an R five. Does South Whitehall Township have criteria that has to be met uh to meet that, other than just going in front of the boards and just getting a yes? Uh, yield back anytime that I have left.
So I'll take that.
Yeah, sounds good.
Uh, two thousand and six was the rezoning and um really the township uh rezoning is at the whim of the Board of Commissioners so long as it's not considered to be a spot zoning. So you're correct. You can basically go before the Board of Commissioners and ask for your property to be rezoned at any time.
And, and this does not fall into spot zoning?
I've seen nothing from the Township Solicitor indicating that we should be concerned, overly concerned with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next we have Henry Cobb, thirty-seven thirty-five Valley View Drive.
No, that's right. It's Valeview Drive. It's in South Whitehall Township, um, just, just north of uh this area. And um my concerns are, again, repeating the, the traffic concerns um going north on Hillview over the bridge. As a baby boomer myself, I'm trying to avoid getting into a home that's being proposed here and do a lot of recreational walking, biking, jogging. And that bridge is a very common um pathway from South Whitehall, you know, to the south to Non-Maker Road is a common walking area. People walk their dogs, they walk their children and their babies and um I'm concerned about the, it, it is a lightly used relatively light traffic area. But this, I think, will impact that and increase the, the traffic in the area and make it much more difficult to navigate that bridge. Part of the problem now with that bridge is there's sidewalk on the bridge, but there's no sidewalk on either side of it um to get to it. So many people end up walking in the street till they get to the bridge and, you know, that's an issue and with increased traffic, that'll just be more of a hazard. It's just, um, you know, Hill, that Hillview Bridge is a single pathway across seventy-eight for my neighborhood um going, going south and going into, getting to green space. I mean, there is, there's a memorial park. Is it, is it Preeter Memorial Park? That we go through sometimes and also access to Lehigh Parkway, we go down, you know, through Hillview. Again, you know, traffic being my main my main concern with the development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Go next.
We had Richard Schaller at eleven seventy Hillview Road, but I believe he already spoke. Namet asked, was a traffic study done by South Whitehall Township? And I guess the answer to that is no. Michael Calagero, forty-two ninety-one Ascot Circle.
Yes, thanks. Uh, I live in Lower McConge, a thirty-year resident of uh that area, of this area. Uh, one thing I want to, I want to clarify since it was mentioned, uh, I attended the uh, the Lower McConge Township meeting, and that was not a slam dunk as it was kind of implied by the development team. It was a five-to-two vote, and I think the biggest thing about that was, well, there were two things. One, on the Lower McConge side, the development was restricted or limited to two stories from three. So that was a major impact. And the second was two of the board members and one in particular kind of cited, and I, I haven't been able to find the strategic plan or study, study that he referenced, but he felt that this didn't fit with the overall character of how the development should be. And I think that's the major theme here. When you, when you look at this development, this spot zoning plan, now that you've kind of coined that for us, and you then go to, I'm looking at the satellite picture of Parkwood, Parkland Manor. That was a ludicrous comparison. I don't want to insult the, the commissioner who brought that up, but Parkland Manor is, is across the street from, from a trucking company. Seriously? I mean, I, I lived in New Jersey thirty years ago, you know, that same distance away as your residence, as your residence from a trucking company, but there's no comparison. This is right in the middle of a development. Uh, I mean, crazy. Got, got, before you do any voting, please take a look at that. Why can't, why can't we find a site like that for a development like this? The other thing I want to bring up is the seven hundred and ninety-two cars a day, trips a day. We had a lot of discussion about this. Uh, I'm concerned, especially in the area, the amount of traffic is dramatically low right now to do a study. You don't, you didn't, you didn't have the elective surgeries, nowhere near the traffic at the hospital. Last thing I want to say is I think the biggest picture you guys have, you have to look at here is quality of life. Is this what the residents who are really densely populated around that or closely populated versus Parkland Manor where they're significantly further away and separated by uh the Pennsylvania Turnpike from any residence development? Is, is this, is this development fit with what the, the zoning should be? And the last thing I want to bring up, bring up to you as someone who does walk, as has been mentioned, is if there is a vehicular fatality from this, who's going to be responsible? Because that will occur if we have the same number of folks walking and biking and doing all the things we do, and we have the traffic increase that we know will occur. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Karen and Dominic Bartels, eleven eighty-one Hillview Road.
Thank you for the floor. Um, we are Lower McConge Township, but we are directly affected on Hillview Road. I want to just concur with all of my neighbors and fellow um people who are against this project adamantly, and I would like to defer the rest of my time to Carl Mabry so he may take it for the floor. Thank you.
How do we handle people that are in twice? Are we letting people speak twice? Or, I mean, there's some written comments that Carol has, um, and I'll read those into the record. But I think we'll move on to
This is Carol Mabry.
Carol Mabry?
I'd like to defer my time to my husband, Carl Mabry.
Oh, there's a Carol and a Carl. I apologize. Perhaps it's best if we'll, uh, I noticed there's some comments in there. I'll read through those and when we get to the last one, if there's anything you'd like to add after that. We have Matt Cresson, eleven eighty-one Clearview Circle.
It's actually eleven eighty-seven, maybe it's a typo. Um, my main comment, I read through the traffic study that was required for the Lower Mac side and all four hundred pages of it. And uh, I just have some concerns here because when you look at the data, they, they, I get what they tried to do. They tried to apply the data from a traffic study from back in June of twenty nineteen and then extrapolate that and, and uh into, into the current numbers to do what they need to do. But if you look at the actual traffic data from, from three days in June of last year, you'd actually find that during COVID, the numbers northbound on Hillview actually went up, not down. the numbers northbound on Hillview actually went up, not down. And if you look at the southbound side, they went down by two thirds in total number of cars. And if you look at the the speeds on the northbound side, these people were set up for three days back in June last year, and they didn't find a single person going over thirty-five miles an hour in three days. But yet, this study in September of this year, one day, found fifteen percent of people going over thirty-five miles an hour. So there are so many discrepancies between the old studies, the old study and the new study, that I don't see how any engineer can take this data and try to apply a factor or or extrapolate this data in in the way that they did. I just don't understand it as an engineer. And I would suggest to anybody to not not take this study seriously. They couldn't even get the name of the road right. They called it Hillview Road instead of Hillview Drive on one side. They had the wrong speed limit. There's over fifty pages where they had the wrong name of the road. It's not professional. This study should be rejected. And I hope South Whitehall, if this goes forward, calls for a study that that is professionally done, hopefully after COVID, hopefully after the vaccine, and that does not have all these obvious errors and problems. Thank you.
Okay, we have a written comment from Carol Mabry. Mayberry, the trips estimated to and from South Whitehall are estimated very low. It seems more likely most trips will come from Hamilton or Cedar Crest utilizing Lincoln and South Whitehall roads. You can Google directions for nine oh nine Hillview or eight thirty-three Hillview. And the directions from Route twenty-two or Allentown will bring you through White, South Whitehall. I think that was already kind of discussed. We have another written comment from Lisa Alec Ackerman. Property was rezoned from RR to R three and property was not developed. Why now moving R three to R five for his project? Zoning across the street is still RR. What criteria does South Whitehall use to justify zoning change like this? Live in South Whitehall, but as I look at your zoning portal, it has me in Lower McCongee, which is another problem. Monica Hodges, seventeen oh seven Penns Crossing.
Hi, I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't know how to unmute. Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you better.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. I adjusted it. I just wanted to make three comments, and I hope I can quickly fit them in here. As for the dot exercise for the comp plan, we met at Spring House, I think, right before everything shut down. It was in early March. And we got together and we had our little exercise placing the dots. I know you all want to believe that people were very serious when they did that. And we all were, to an extent, very serious when we did it. But you also have to remember, there was a heated bunch of people there, because we were still reeling from the impact of Ridge Farm. And there were a lot of people there who would put a dot anywhere, anywhere away from them because of what Ridge Farm is going to do to our area. So I think you need to take that into consideration. Also, take into consideration that some staff members were going around and pointing out that orphan parcel and saying, you know, here's this orphan parcel, there's this, you know, development around it, but it's just sitting here. And I feel that that was, I think people were a little manipulated by that being done. I mean, I appreciate people pointing things out. But, you know, if you really don't understand what's going on and you don't understand what's looming on the horizon, sure, you're going to put a dot wherever, as long as it's away from you, especially when you have eight hundred and fifty houses going up right down the block. I'm really feeling very unheard, and I can really empathize with all the Hillview people. I'm not sure what's going on with our local government. But we're not being heard. We're not being heard. Citizens feel like they're not being heard. You have outcry with Ridge Farm, you have outcry with the Parkview people, you have outcry with Hillview people. I mean, listen to us, please. We have to stay here. And we have to live here when all the developers move out. Does that mean anything? You could still have something reasonable. People, citizens are willing to compromise. The Hillview people said they wouldn't mind having single-family residences. At Ridge Farm, with those waivers, we knew something was going to go in there. Why not just deny some of those waivers? If we, you'd still have a profitable development. The other thing I wanted to say to Mr. Attia is I really respect what you're doing and what you're putting in there. I'm just so very sorry that it couldn't be in something that could be repurposed. Because we have so many buildings that could be repurposed and used for this, and they're just eyesores, and they're sitting there, and they're rotting. And I wish developers would take a good look at some of those buildings that could potentially be repurposed. The last thing I wanted to say is there was an entrance that was proposed, and there was talk about placing it at the opposite end of that that proposed plan. I don't know what happened. Is there any hope for that to happen? Is that still in the works? I'm not sure. But I do appreciate you giving me the floor. I appreciate you hearing me. I'm not sure if anyone's listening to me, but I do appreciate you giving me the opportunity to talk. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Next, we have a written comment, David Erdman, High Point Drive, South Whitehall. All emphasis has been on traffic at intersections. My concern is the use of High Point Drive as a spur route, so to speak. It is a residential street that is now subject to speeding by motorists seeking entrance to Lincoln Ave, Cedar Crest, Route two twenty-two, et cetera. Another written comment by Julie Bard Tochi. I agree with Carol. I am concerned with Lincoln, especially between Hamilton and Cedar Crest. There is a park on Lincoln where many very young children play daily. There is no fence stopping young toddlers from running out in the road. The neighborhood is divided by Lincoln. I cross Lincoln daily to take my children to the park, age two and four, and recently was nearly run over by a speeding car. Cars don't stop for pedestrians, they speed. The police do not monitor it often. Adding more cars and ambulances driving very fast into the equation is a huge safety issue for our neighborhood and personally our family. I am very supportive of helping seniors, however, should not come at the expense of the safety of our children. Another written comment, Carol Mabry. Closest grocery store, drugstore, et cetera, is utilizing roads through South Whitehall Township. The road maintenance for South Whitehall and traffic accident control will be increased in South Whitehall. Another written comment, question, Mike Calagero. Why is he being, oh, that, another question about talking and speaking time. I don't see any residents near Parkland Manor. He brought that up in his his comments. Another written comment, if Parkland Manor doesn't have a hundred, one hundred and seventy-two apartments, as well as the nursing facility, if not, can can't compare traffic impact. There is only one entrance for one hundred and seventy-two apartments and additional hundred-bed facility, and it's on Hillview. Let's get real when estimating the impact, please. Another comment about poor comparison. David Erdman, the neighborhood bordered by Cedar Crest, two twenty-two Hillview is currently being used as a through route for high speeds. So any development that would exacerbate this should be carefully considered. Another comment about the time constraints. Matt Cresson has concerns related to the traffic study and the study that was not available to the public at the last meeting. More comments about time. Joanne Markowitz spoke, but she had a written comment. So can someone explain to me why our issues are not being taken into consideration now? When now is the time to decide if it should be rezoned? If it is rezoned and our issues aren't addressed now, and the Township finds out that the parcel cannot hold the project, isn't it too late that? You people keep talking about the future, and yet, when we are trying to help, you see the downside of the rezoning, you ignore us. We have Lee Salt.
Yes, hi, good evening. A question for the developers, actually. On page two fifteen in the packet, you have a plan for the the one-story building against for Route seventy-eight and the two-story building, or the all the other two buildings going palace are at ninety grand to that building. The question I have is, I've seen numerous plans for this, and I've heard now somebody said it's only two stories instead of three stories. Is is this the current plan for this project? How many stories is it? Can you give us an update on on what this is? What changed or what didn't change since the last time you presented the 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 plan?
Let me try that. Right now, we have recommendations from the Planning Commission in Lower McCongee. The Commissioners have not yet determined what conditions, if any, they impose on the conditional use. So we have not gone to the design phase at all. What we have is basically a concept plan, because that's what one does when the use is approved, not the layout is approved. We'll then do the, presuming we get conditional use approval from Lower McCongee in January, we'll then proceed to come forward with a preliminary land development plan where we'll determine where the buildings are based upon, among other things, where stormwater facilities have to go, what the what the actual parking requirements have to be, what accesses are appropriate. And that plan will either move ahead with or without the extended care facility in South Whitehall. But that that's current schedule. So we don't have answers to those questions at this point. Because we don't have the final answers from either Township.
Okay, because the reason I asked that question, Mr. Erdman, was because I remember a plan that said, I had all three buildings in Lower McCongee Township, which then you wouldn't need the deferral or the rezoning of the South Whitehall Township property. So that's why I was wondering which plan you were looking to move forward with, or if there was an option of, if you didn't get the deferral or zoning rezoning, you would put the three buildings in on Lower McCongee Township.
And there might be misunderstanding there. It was, it was mentioned about the building being in Lower McCongee Township, but that has never been proposed by the developer. The plan has always showed shown the multi-story buildings in Lower McCongee Township and the single-story building in South Whitehall. The orientation of the building, I think, shifted slightly in one of the earlier sketches, but the developer never proposed to have the third building in Lower McCongee Township.
Okay, because I remember during one of the meetings that you had said, oh, this wasn't the current plan that was proposed. And here was the current plan at a, at a, that a different slide that showed the current plan. There was a change in there, and that's why I would just wonder, I just want to know what the current, what the current plan that you're looking to go with. I know you're not in the in the the development stage, but you've you've shown plans, I just want to know what the current one is.
As as Attorney Miles just described, it is a concept plan. But I can tell you that that is the current concept plan in terms of we, where we anticipate to have the buildings. The two, multi-story in Lower McCongee, the single story in South Whitehall Township.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, and a question to Brian Height, and I'm sorry, Brian, I don't want to put you on the spot. You live by Parkland Manor, and you can address the, my only question is that it was, it was mentioned earlier that there's no noise complaints from the park about residents around the Parkland Manor. And all I would say is that there's, it appears to be, I don't know if there's any noise at all coming from the facility, but it would appear to me that there's more residents would be around the Lower McCongee Manor as compared to the Parkland Manor.
That that would be a fair statement, yes.
Okay, thank you.
A follow-up, Mr. Erdman, this plan that that Lee Salt just referenced on page two fifteen, is this the, I know there were two plans submitted to Lower McCongee, one with thirty percent service and one with forty percent impervious service. Which plan are we looking at on this?
That's a good question. At this point, it is dependent upon whether or not Lower McCongee Township will grant relief to allow forty percent impervious. And the history on that is that during the first discussion at the Lower McCongee Township Planning Commission, there were discussions about amenities and other things that could be added to the project. The problem was that there wasn't sufficient impervious cover at thirty percent. So the Planning Commission requested that we come back to the next meeting with the two plans indicating what we could do with the forty percent. And as I said a moment ago, the forty percent plan, it does not add additional units, it does not add additional density. It simply allows additional impervious cover to put in such things as amenities, maybe a more robust pathway system, some clubhouse buildings, an additional clubhouse building, et cetera. So that's why there's two plans, because at this point, without that relief to go to forty percent, it would be the thirty percent plan with the relief, which I suspect the Lower McCongee Planning Commission kind of liked the amenities. Whether they approve the forty percent or not, we don't know. But if they do, that would be the plan. But as far as the buildings, both plans show the buildings in the same location.
And if I could add to that, Commissioner Diane Kelly, I, the one-story building at South Whitehall is the way it is, that this, it's the way it's designed. It's not going to change whether it's thirty percent or forty percent. That access road on South Whitehall is the same. The only benefit to the increase in pervious is going to give us a second access out of to Clearway. We will be able to use it as as a double access, and it'll take a lot less traffic off of Hillview. The sort of forty percent gives us a two-way road out, gives us some some other amenities, clubhouse, swimming pool, all those extras that we like to do without increasing density. So it is a well-witted for the neighborhood and our residents if they increase the forty. But we have our approved plans of thirty percent impervious, and and we're going to build it that way, unless they allow us to increase. And so that's all I have.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that all of the questions?
We have Joanne Markowitz asks, who in South Whitehall has read the traffic impact study? I think we discussed that, and our Township Engineer reviewed that. Pete McAfee, seven sixteen South Hillview Road, would like to comment.
Hello, sorry, I had you unmuted. The one thing I didn't notice was impact on public safety for the Township as a whole. There's nothing brought up about speaking to Chief Dorney from the Police Department and the impact that this will have on his officers and the safety of all the residents in the Township. When someone from an Alzheimer's unit walks away and gets out, especially when the weather is adverse like it is now, it's all hands on deck for all the police officers that are working, because that's a life and death situation for that resident. And everyone in this neighborhood will be able to attest to that from when the resident from the the facility over on Cedar Crest Boulevard walked away. She was found deceased in a drainage ditch right down the street from where this is going to be placed. So I was just kind of wondering why that hasn't been addressed, and that should also be taken into consideration. And in the previous meeting, Mr. Attia also brought up about if he needs to widen roads, or just widen the roads. I'm wondering where he's going to get the land from, because all the residents here on Hillview Road, I don't know anyone that is going to be willing to just turn over land to him. I live right on the bend of the road. If you've driven that road before, you'll notice that that bend is really sharp. And that's where the traffic issues are going to be when you have larger trucks. And I am never going to allow Mr. Attia to take my land. So that's going to be a fight that he'll have to take to court. So that's just my comments for now. And I just want the planning commission to really just kind of search your hearts and see who is actually commenting here. This is a township residents that are all up in arms on this. And I think you really need to search your souls and when you're making your votes on this. Thank you.
Bill, may I respond to that? I just want to clarify the record. There has been discussion about sidewalks and the fact that there's no place for people to walk on on Hillview Drive, but there has not been a discussion by the developer to widen Hillview Road. In fact, you would not do that because the narrow road actually creates slower traffic. If you widen it, you're going to have traffic driving faster. So there has not been discussion.
Obviously, we're listening to Mr. Attia at the last meeting because he definitely did say that. And I'm sure I'm not the only one that heard it. He said, if I need to widen the roads, I widen the roads. So I was.
He's willing to do it, but that's not something that's being discussed at the engineer.
Well, where's he going to get the land?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I understand your point.
I heard that as well.
Let me speak, please. I'll just quick response. I never said I would widen the road. Okay, second, I said if the if the township wants to put a walking path, a paved walking path, I will consider contributing to that and maintaining it only if a township wants to do that. I would never take a public property. That's the township's responsibility. Thirdly, our memory care facilities, everybody has a wonder guard system on their wrist. If they go out that door, it rings. All every door in the facilities are secured and we also have fencing on the outside. Wonder guard, get through a secure door and jump over a fence to get out of our facility. So we're super secure. We have a facility on 22 and we watch real close. And just think of one other thing. What if that were your parent in there? You live in that neighborhood. What if God forbid, one of our, one of your.
I don't want to argue with Mr. Attia here because obviously everyone else did hear what he said about widening the roads. And I'm not going to comment on his trustworthiness.
I could never widen the road. It's not my responsibility. It's a township.
Abe, when you were discussing trucks coming through for your facilities and your proposed Atlanta routes coming through, you did discuss widening the roads. I did hear that.
I did say it. If the township wanted to do that, I cannot do it myself. If the township, it's a township road and anytime they could widen it and a township could take your property, I can't do that. I'm not, I don't have the authority to take your property, but the township can't. I can't. So I can't do that.
Thanks. More comments?
Yep. David Erdman, 3811 High Point Drive, South Whitehall.
Yes, thank you for recognizing me. Can you hear me, folks? So I certainly realize that, you know, the answer to the future is not always, you know, more single-family homes, et cetera. There will be more density and certainly anybody should expect more development. So I'm really talking about, you know, just opposing development per se. But this area here is very fragile in the sense that it's a it's a residential area that is bounded by a lot of highways and a lot of issues going on. And really, it is kind of an urban planner's nightmare gone wrong. I mean, if you really look at what's going on around here. So I'm just asking the planners to really consider this and maybe the spirit of a comprehensive plan and really be very careful. You have Route 222 right across from Dorney Park where there's, you know, just just bad signage and people driving on the wrong way, a one-way street, somebody killed on the highway. No, there's really no pedestrian friendly areas in this in this whole quadrant really here. So anything like this at all that could dump more traffic, more issues into the neighborhood, understanding that development is going to happen. We're just, I'm really just asking that you be very careful and look at this holistically in an area that really has not been planned too well, has been planned horribly actually. Not pedestrian friendly, dangerous to pedestrians, dangerous to motorists actually, the way the the whole bypass situation has come about. So just asking for broader broader vision on this one for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
A written comment from Mark Walter. I understand, as Dave Wilson said, that this parcel of land is ideal from a tax advantage standpoint. You get taxes with no drain on the township from school-aged children. Understand that this is our neighborhood and should not simply be about maximizing the tax dollar at the detriment of the local residents without the proper information from a proper study. Also, if approved, Mr. Attia stated that the amenities will be available to the residents. Mr. Attia, will this, will us residents be allow access to the amenities on your property, including clubhouse and walkways?
Yes, it's a good question and we're designing our walkways and our clubhouse to be used for public and private. Neighbors will be allowed to use that walking path and like it's a public park. And our residents are going to, well, we want interaction with residents and neighbors. It's healthy for a geriatric resident or an independent level resident to mix and mingle with a neighbor. We're creating a retirement neighborhood in your community. So your parents, guys, I know you're all fighting me right now. I understand the fight and I respect you protecting your properties. However, we all age. Everybody in here is going to age. We're all, God willing, going to be 85, 95, and 100. We're going to look around and say, our kids don't want to take care of us anymore. They don't want to wipe our asses. They don't want, they don't want to feed us and bathe us and all that. That's what we do. We're, we have personal caregivers that do that stuff. And, and you know, we are creating the common out for the neighbors to use. Yeah, walking path, clubhouse, it's all going to be able, it's going to be a community type service. Yes.
So if there's a pool that you had proposed, we would be able to use the pool as well?
If you're a member, yes. You're, if you live within the neighborhood and we're going to, we're going to talk about a plan idea, there's going to be, we're actually going to have an indoor and an outdoor pool. We're going to have two pools. So it's something, it's something that we're planning that as a common amenity for the for the community. That's how we're planning it. Our residents don't swim a lot. They don't like going in the water a whole lot.
That was my next question.
They don't. And it's something that we're going to build a pool and they're not going to use it a lot. So we're going to work with the community to have certain hours. Our residents have privacy in the pool and the rest of the hours are open to the public. We are planning it that way.
We have David Burke.
Yes, question. If all three buildings are moved over to Lower McCongee Township, then you wouldn't have to seek any rezoning. Why not do that?
Well, we, we don't have the impervious coverage on that side. If I did that, we would have to redesign and I would have to put all the parking lot on the South Whitehall side and cramp all the buildings right next to each other. I thought about that. If South Whitehall denies us, I thought, can we do it? I'd have to redesign, recalculate, and it would look, it would look like Phoebe Ministries in downtown Allentown. You know, no green space. It would look terrible. So there is a small chance we can do that, but it's going to, it's going to be an urban type retirement community. And I don't, I don't like developing a project that's going to look like like that. I'd just rather use the green space, have walking paths and try and develop this. And South Whitehall, we have a good relationship with South Whitehall. We bought the facility. We're happy, they're happy. We're a good impact. We're a good taxpayer. And if I got denied, we'd have to redesign. I already got the approvals for the two buildings, independent and personal care. But this higher acuity building is critical to our project. For, I told you about when the spouses deteriorate and one's going to leave each other, they're having them both on the same campus is healthy for their, they could live together and they could die in this campus together. It's like, it's nice. That's what we develop. So by denying us this in South Whitehall, it's going to cause, we have to redesign the building and maybe squeeze this building in and push closer to the neighborhood and no Mac. I think we have some room to push the building up over closer to you guys. Eliminate all the the clubhouses, no clubhouses, no swimming pool. There will be three buildings with a little bit of parking enough to meet the ordinance. And that's what you'd see and you guys would say, what the heck is this? It looks like, it looks like a downtown Allentown. That's what you will complain about. So this is a desired plan that works good with us. This is our sixth facility. We have five facilities now and we have, this will be our sixth facility.
Hey, we have Carl Mabry, 909 Hillview Road, already spoke and then had some written comments. I guess anything you'd like to add?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the time. According to what I've collected, and I have been using a stopwatch on all of this, I have at least eight minutes of time from people that have yielded their time to me. You have also allowed the developer and their team over 42 minutes of time to talk. So please don't cut me off. This is directly related to what they've proposed and what they have suggested. Concerning the traffic study, introduction project summary, section one, property is bounded by Hillview on the east, not the west. Land used context, section one, subsection A, does description define spot zoning in that subsection? It is surrounded by homes and you're dropping in an R5 medium density deal. So I would like you to consider spot zoning on this. Data collection, section two, subsection A states, traffic count data was adjusted to reflect reducing associated with COVID. It seems a collection of data for one day in 2020 compared to a collection of data for three days in 2019 would greatly impact the factor calculated in the AM and PM peak hours. Can you answer why there was only one day of data collected in 2020 and three days collected in 2019? When the equipment was up on the intersection for at least two days, I think, I think three to four days. Also, subsection B states that 25 mile an hour posted on Hillview Road. There is not a sign posted on this road between Kressler and Pedro stating the speed limit. Also, how do they come up with 50, 50% traffic coming from South Whitehall and Lower McCongee Township? When there was no traffic study done in South Whitehall? I mean, that is just ridiculous. If you Google anything coming from Abe from Allentown, which Abe says all his employees will be coming from Allentown, it all comes through South Whitehall Township. If you Google anything coming from Parkland Manor where he says his meals will be delivered, it comes through South Whitehall Township. So I don't know how you come up with 50, 50% traffic study. I seriously question the validity and the accuracy of the traffic study. While Mr. Terry has given many accolades about his time and experience in traffic studies, I have to seriously question it. They don't have any speed limits or anything I've discussed. Summary, as you see, I've touched on a few fraction of the traffic study showing many inaccuracies and questionable calculations. Traffic has everything to do with you changing this zoning and considering density from R3 to R5. Moving on to concerning the rezoning request from Stevens and Lee. Their first paragraph is completely flawed when pertaining to compass directions. Route 309 and I-78 is bound the parcel on the north side, not the east. Lower McCongee bounds the property on the east, south, and west sides. And Hillview Roads bounds the property on the east side. Completely flawed on those compass directions, simple compass directions. This is an issue of trying to rush this through and not consider the implications, especially of traffic and water drainage. I'm not even going to touch water drainage because you're not going to give me the time, but traffic specifically, safety. Where I'm sure they're very capable lawyers, I wouldn't want to go hiking with them. They should paragraph, the second paragraph ends with, they are not being sent away from what has become their home, when in fact they are, when you consider moving from one building to another. It is my understanding that their view, if any, out of any windows, will be completely different. It is my understanding that their home will change from independent living to multiple beds in a room. I understand what Mr. Attia is saying about couples being separated from one going to a facility to another. But I would like to see, and I would like you to consider as a planning commission, what the the percentage is that there are couples that are separated that way. The fifth paragraph of their proposal, they're requesting to rush a vote for a zoning change through a few reasons, which I object to. Pointedly, the Township Review Board is a recommending body and should only be considered. Secondly, their financing and land ownership deals should have no bearing on this if the zoning change should happen concerning traffic safety and the water drainage. Paragraph seven states that the single-family houses weren't built because it was not economically viable, but that was during the 2008 economic economy collapse, not because single-family home development was not economically viable. It was because the entire economy in the nation collapsed. Could anyone in the planning, well, I'm not even going to ask that question. But I'd like, from this point forward, any statement from Mr. Attia makes regarding his statements considering amenities offered, trucks coming to the property and other amenities such as pools, walking paths, clubhouse, availability, it should be in the covenants of his proposal. He offers these things, but I really, really do not think that those will be considered when this goes through, if it goes through. Parkland Manor has been 50% occupied for the last three months, according to Abe Attia. He keeps saying that, the board of commissioners meeting, Lower McCongee Township meetings and the planning commission meetings. It's surrounded by commercial properties. If you look at a map and industrial properties, they already have heavy equipment rolling through tractor trailers. So of course they are not going to have any kind of complaints as far as traffic. And he, if you go to that property, you will see about a quarter to half acre pile of trash, box trucks that have been taken off box of trucks, the boxes laid on the ground for storage, concrete, dirt, asphalt piled up 15, 20 feet high on a quarter to half an acre lot. Is that what's going to happen on this lot when they build this retirement community? I don't want to see that. I don't want the vermin, the rats, the mice, all of that coming from that property because of that. I was understanding one story, the one-story building that they're proposing in South Whitehall Manor had 100 beds, but they're only proposing 50 rooms. That was kind of explained, but he said these are private rooms offered at $4,490. The 16 rooms that he has that are not private, that are private, is that an increased cost that he's not mentioning? Finally, I'd just like to say, big point here. The, if you look at the zoning map in South Whitehall, there's a small sliver that is not surrounded by residential communities. Dropping something like this in is spot zoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. David said, everybody, no?
No. We have Joanne Markowitz, written comment, yet another example of the downside of rezoning the South Whitehall Township parcel. If the Lower McCongee Township VOC sticks to the reduction to two-story, Mr. Attia has said several times that two-story buildings is not an option. It would not be cost effective for him to continue with the project. This is a big problem with the parcel plans being in two townships and could leave the parcel if rezoned to R5, open for maximum building usage. Mary Turk, Lower McCongee, 1045 Manor Drive, secondary entrance will not be approved for general access only emergency per recommendations from Lower McCongee Planning Committee. She continues, that is for regardless as to amenities or not. Mike Caligaro already spoke. Henry Cobb, thirty-seven thirty-five, written comment, really want to emphasize to Mr. Attia, the idea to reuse, repurpose vacant facilities for this kind of use, and I encourage South Whitehall Township to help facilitate that kind of project. Why not expand Parkland Manor? This is Mike Caligaro. It looks like these there, these is ample property. Joanne Markowitz, we, we live in this neighborhood and we know this neighborhood, just like each of you know your neighborhood. We know what is going on, going to happen to, in our neighborhood. And that is why we are here to try and explain to each of you what will happen to our neighborhood if McConge Manor is built on this parcel. And I'll leave you with a statement for you to ponder. Your home is your castle. It is the largest single investment that you will make. A home is not merely home is not merely a house, it is a place for living. Do each of you feel that enough consideration has been put into this rezoning to allow you to go through? One more, Carol Mabry, Pendot has not approved water drainage near I seventy-eight. You should not consider anything until that is that is cleared. Lower McConge is very concerned about that. You should also. That does it for the chat. We also have callers that I can open up.
Yes, this is. I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Yes, give your name and address.
Yep, my name is Sue Hyatt. I'm at eleven sixty Hillview Road. I'm in Lower McConge Township. I'm on the corner of Hillview and Kressler Roads. We were talking about traffic, so I'll, I'll talk to that issue first. I see a considerable amount of traffic. The hospital has opened up their emergency room. They've expanded it, and so there's ambulances going by every day, as well as tractor trailers. And speaking of tractor trailers, I know that Mr. Attia had indicated that no tractor trailers come into his facility, although during the construction period, there'll be numerous tractor trailers using Hillview Road, Kressler Roads and the surrounding South Whitehall Township roads. I'm not even sure how they're going to get turning in and out of that property. Also, it was mentioned that the ambulances being so close to the hospital wouldn't need to use their sirens, and I, I would call that inaccurate. Every time they come to the intersection of which we live right next to, their sirens go on. So I believe that that would occur also in leaving the property and going to the hospital. Furthermore, Lehigh Valley Hospital Network, or Health Network, I should say, has purchased acreages that a but Kressler Road go out to seventy-eight, go back up to Hillview and down to East Texas and about the hospital property as it is now. The, they're going to be expanding, so that expansion on top of the proposed Hillview Road development that Mr. Attia is going to build is again going to impact the roads with traffic and noise and so forth. Sidewalks or walkways, whatever would be put onto Hillview Road that was proposed two different ways. One was a trail, one was sidewalks. Either way, that would encumber the properties of the, of the homeowners and also the ongoing liability. You know, the liability issues can be brought up irregardless of any negligence. And then I'm wondering if you received the petition that was signed by over, I believe, three hundred neighbors. Joanne Markowitz and a few other of the, the concerned neighbors had put that together. And I do believe they had sent it to South Whitehall Township. And I hope that in so many neighbors voicing concerns about this, that that is taken into consideration. And thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like a two-minute response to, to her comments, please, about Lehigh Valley Hospital, if I could short. Man, you're right. Lehigh Valley Hospital did buy all the land behind Mr. Mayberry's house. Everything on the other side of Hill is owned by the hospital. So what do you think you're going to do in the future? There's going to sit and grow farms on it. It's, you know, it, it the future of this corner, even South Whitehall saying in higher density. When you, when you all bought your house here and everything, it's a beautiful neighborhood. I agree. But the hospital is close by. Dorney Park is near. It's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a busy corridor. You, you have a nice little niche neighborhood in here and I respect it. That's why my, I feel my residential community is going to be more compatible with your single family neighborhood than, than anything. It's, it's a good residential use. It's geriatric residence, low impact. And so I, I think we complement each other here and, and I'll make it look like like we're the bad guys here. We're actually taking, we protect and take care of over six hundred elderly people in Lehigh Valley. We protect them, we bathe them, we medicate them, we feed them. That's what we do. Okay? If you think that's a bad thing in your neighborhood, then shame on you. You're shameful.
This is no regard to shame on you, Abe, for saying that to someone like that. The commercial property that the hospital owns is going to be developed. It is going to impact the traffic. You are only going to make it worse beforehand, yes, but the commercial property that the Lehigh Valley Hospital is going to come in with is going to make our traffic worse. So you're not making it any better. You're not compatible. And shame on you for saying we do not care about elderly people. You've done that before. Don't do it again. How good is your food traveling four miles?
Mr. Mayberry, this is Jennifer Alster, the assistant solicitor, and if that continues, I'm going to have to ask one of the hosts to mute you. Unfortunately, we need to keep this moving along. And so if there are any other callers on the line, I think we need to take their comments since Mr. Mayberry has already had an opportunity to speak. So Dave, is there another caller?
This is Sue Hyatt. I'd like to respond to Mr. Attia's comment back to some of my questions. Would that be allowed?
Mr. McNair?
Would that be? Would that be allowed to comment back to Mr. Attia's comment to my statement?
Okay, we'll give you two minutes.
It won't take long. For one thing, I'm seeing, you know, a personality coming out in, in Mr. Attia in that anything that is reflected back to him as a negative comment comes back with a lot of anger. I, that goes to the whole story of, of what might take place here. But the other thing is that he proved my point and he made it stronger in that if Lehigh Valley Health Network is going to expand, which they are, they're going to create more traffic. And then that is on top of the traffic that his development is going to create. So I appreciate his comment, not his getting nasty with me, but his comment in terms of the, the traffic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any more phone comments or do we finish that?
I would like to speak, please.
Okay, your, your name and the address?
My name is Janice Smith and I live at thirty-seven forty-nine Crestview Drive in South Whitehall Township. To me, it's that the builder strives on trying to push time to his advantage and having the board make adequate decisions before all the correct information, inform, informative data is completed and received is the reason why a person would do such a thing. Sincerely, there is something to think about here. As you hear, many residents have been now made aware of the McConge Manor development, and still there are many that have not. Those few that were informed and had attended the builder's informative meeting with the zoning efforts. Although it was told to the commissioners that those residents that attended were happy. Residents have questioned water runoff, various traffic concerns, safety issues, more excessive lighting, view restrictions, and the builder, builder's true intentions, which should also be a concern to the boards of both South Whitehall and Lower McConge Township, whether you wish to work together for the better of the concerned residents or not. It should be known. Note the builder's Parkland Manor is not finished yet, and he wants to take on more of an undertaking when his other property sits with garbage debris and tractor trailer bodies littering the ground. Is this what the residents have to look forward to with the McConge Manor likewise? I feel that the builder is, did not seem to be truthful with the Board of Commissioners when he showed up at a commissioner's meeting stating that the residents were happy with him and trying to get rezoning for this land. Hence, a video was submitted to the board and how he represented himself and the project to a mere few surrounding residents that were lucky enough to get notified. On his, on his video, the builder then went on to bully them and didn't comply with his, if they didn't comply with his wishes, stating that if he didn't, if they didn't like it, he would put townhomes in instead. His video therefore showing the Board of Commissioners the truth of how his meeting actually went. The builder at this meeting also told the Lower McConge residents stating that all of the traffic using his facility would turn left and go over the bridge into the surrounding South Whitehall Township. So they did not have to worry about traffic on their streets. Then, in a Lower McConge Township meeting, his representative stated the traffic would go fifty-fifty into both townships. The truth is, no one can state any of that as a fact for sure, so it's just assumptions on everyone's part. A note to the builder. I was taking care of my relatives for years. One, I, one went into a facility and it was a terrible experience, although it was a very well-known facility. When I visited him, once he could not take care of himself anymore, I found him naked and bloody multiple times. When I was told the staff was checking on him hourly and upped the charge for his care. His care costs over forty-nine thousand, forty-four thousand nine hundred dollars a month, not including everything. U.S. Commissioners, may I just continue, please? I have a few more things. U.S. Commissioners should feel good to hold your head up high when you make the decision to support the people in the township because you are on the board. So I ask you, as the commissioners, are you really working for the best interest of the residents and community in their area? Does the Board of Commissioners? Is this builder, a builder of integrity now that township's once more building in their township? And can we honestly trust what's stating? Or is it just what people want to hear so the builder gets what he wants? And is this the type of builder that our township wants to support? I can only hope that you hold on to your integrity and your good conscience, being part of this board, that you feel justified in the zoning change decision that you make tonight and that the public that has expressed their concerns have felt heard. Personally, for myself, I admire a man who is truthful because it shows real integrity. So I would hope that all of the commissioners on this board tonight think in good conscience how you are voting about this, the development and the builder behind it. I only wish that General Kressler would be alive today to be able to proceed with this decision. Maybe we would get park land area out of the land. I thank you for listening to me and I hope you work in the best interest of the residents.
Thank you.
Two-minute response on the
No.
Two minutes, just called with your Parkland Manor. I just want to, that's a construction site. I'm working on permits and finalizing my building. That parking lot's filled with construction debris for my new building I'm building. We're waiting to finalize our project, so it, yeah, it does. It's a construction site. It's all filed. There's a just explanation for the planners.
Forget about it.
Okay, are there any other calls?
Yes, I'd like to speak. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Okay, my name is Tony Fadali and my address is eleven eighty-seven Hillview Road. My property butts right up against the prop, the, the south east corner of the property we're talking about. And I'm one of the three hundred people that are against this project. I'd like to speak for the stakeholders, the people that do surround this property. Changing the residency from R three to R five is taking something away from me. My wife and I built our house forty-five years ago and we don't want to have somebody come along and steal from us. Changing the residency is stealing because this is something that somebody wants to do to make more money for themselves, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Are there any more? Okay. All right. Call that finished. Go back. This is going to the planning, because we're going to take a vote now to see what the planning commission thinks. Jennifer. What are we, can we do a simple, you know, do we approve of the zoning change or not? Or you, you wrote a statement. Do, do, should we read the statement?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Uh, the ordinance or? You, you said the, the one that you marked up and then you had a clean copy and?
Oh, well, that's the proposed ordinance from the developer that we, we marked up. And, and Blake, I don't know if you have any comments with respect to the marked up version. We didn't hear back from you. So if you, do you have any issues with the, the markup?
I, I do not, Jennifer. That, the language is fine.
I have no other, yeah, I have no other statement, Bill, unless the planning commission members want to discuss the ordinance in any way.
Is there any discussion of the ordinance from the planning commission? I, I, I'm going to say we'll move to a vote. And yes.
I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page here. The ordinance that we're talking about tonight starts on page one forty-eight and is four pages long going to one fifty-one. Just want to make sure everybody's looking at the same ordinance.
Could you please explain that ordinance to the callers and citizens of South Whitehall Township?
Maybe we could read it.
Yeah, since, yeah, show it on the screen, unless you can show it on the screen.
A summary would be acceptable to me. I'm just looking for what you're talking about there.
Do I take that one?
Would you like to summarize your ordinance, please?
Yeah, and all, all it, all it does is changes the zoning map for the three point eight acres from R three to R five. And when Attorney Alderfer reviewed it, she added what we would call boilerplate in our, in our field, which has to do with how, what the process is, if the if the ordinance were to be found to be invalid or, or something like that. So the language she added is standard for ordinances of this kind and we're comfortable with it. But all the ordinance really does is change the zoning map with regard to that three point eight eight acres.
Thank you.
Any, any clarification comments from the planning commission?
Bill, yeah, if you like, well, there it is.
Sorry, just got it.
Is that, is that legible to most people out there?
Maybe blow it up a little bit.
Especially short title. There you go.
I'll read the whereas clauses. If that's acceptable, just so everybody's on the same page.
Okay.
Whereas the township of South Whitehall, quote marks township from this point forward, has established its R three residential zoning district to encourage low-density suburban development and whereas a small approximately three point eight eight nine acre portion of a large tract, or larger tract located principally in Lower McConge Township, separated physically from all other land in South Whitehall Township by right of way of Interstate seventy-eight corridor and it's zoned R three and whereas
Interstate seventy eight corridor and it's zoned R three and whereas. An assisted living residence is a land used comparable to uses which are permitted conditionally. In Lower McCunty Township for the remainder of the larger approximately fourteen point eight nine five acre tract. Of which approximately three point eight eight nine acre South Whitehall Township portion is a part. And whereas. An assisted living residences are permitted uses in the township's R five zone, but not in its R three zone. And whereas, allowing assisted living residences on a small approximately three point eight nine nine acre portion of the larger parcel. May promote a suburban lifestyle for residents who are seniors or are infirm. And may allow coordinated development with the remainder of the tract of which the smaller acreage is a part of. Which the this acres is part of. And whereas, the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners. Has conducted a public hearing pursuant to public notice concerning the following amendments to the South Whitehall Township zoning ordinance. And whereas, after a public hearing pursuant to public notice. The South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners desires to ordain and enact the amendments to the South Whitehall Township zoning ordinance. As set forth hereinafter. Now therefore be ordained and enacted by the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners and it's hereby ordained and enacted by the authority the same to wit. Amendments to the zoning ordinance, section one, amend appendix A zoning district map with innovation overlay districts in the manner depicted in exhibit A. Here to attach here to and incorporated herein. And then there's a severability clause failure, there's all those legal stuff, so. That's basically what we're doing, we're rezoning or recommending the rezoning of three point eight nine nine acres. In the yellow shown on the screen.
From R three to R to R five. Okay. So that's, that's the um. Issue on the floor, any, any other question or comments from the planning commission?
I have a clarification, this um, ordinance that you just read. Um, speaks from the position of the Board of Commissioners, so we're not able to approve this. We're recommending whether or not we recommend a rezone, we're not.
That's correct, Diane, yeah.
Okay, so why are we reading this ordinance? This is what the Board of Commissioners will have before them.
Okay, we can just go ahead.
Because it's the proposed ordinance and the Board of Commissioners asked the planning commission to weigh in. So we are simply considering it now and if the planning commission members recommend it. Um, then it goes back to the Board of Commissioners for a hearing um, on the adoption of the ordinance.
Correct, I mean, that's what caught my attention where it says the Board of Commissioners has conducted a public hearing pursuant to public notice. You know, we are just the advisory board as the planners, so we're not recommending, I mean, we're recommending whether or not we would. Ask them to rezonate, but we're not having to do that.
Your action tonight does not lead to the signature of this ordinance. It simply recommends it to the Board of Commissioners who then. Reviews the ordinance and at a hearing decides whether they're willing to adopt it, at which point it may or may not be signed by the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Basically, we're recommending that.
I'd just like to say Carl Mabry, thank you for the clarification, thank you for the clarification, Mrs. Kelly and Ms. Aldifer. Um, I just wanted to know what they said when they said that pertaining to that.
Okay, um, any, any other comments, questions from the board, from the planning commission?
Okay, we'll take it. Is there, is there any? Is there any possibility of a, of a, a South Whitehall traffic, traffic study? It sounded earlier as though the traffic study was strictly in the other township.
Um, that could be done as part of the develop, you know, the, the development process, this is a zoning change.
Yeah. For the record, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify, we are not recommending this resolution to them. We are voting on whether or not we are recommending to the board. Our opinion on this rezone.
Okay. That's, that's correct, so.
I'm just a little bit confused with the reading of this ordinance and.
Okay.
The language in it doesn't really apply to a recommending board.
Okay, Diane, maybe I made a mistake, why don't we just say, does the planning commission, we're voting on the change of the zoning for this parcel. From R three to R five, period. Does that work? Diane?
I'd like the solicitor to, to confirm, I certainly don't make a leak.
I can't hear, I can't hear what you're saying, Diane.
I was asking um, a solicitor, Aldifer, just.
Yeah, it's, is the question um, whether you are approving the ordinance tonight?
Yeah, I'm a little confused about why we read the ordinance when that's not what we're voting on, I just want to.
Yeah, you're not voting on the adoption of the ordinance tonight because the ordinance simply accomplishes a rezoning. So in order to do the zoning ordinance amendment, you have to have the proposed ordinance. Um, so it's really done in conjunction with the rezoning. So the, the issue for you to consider is whether you're recommending the rezoning to the Board of Commissioners, at which point they will adopt. Or, or maybe won't adopt a zoning ordinance amendment.
But we're not, we're not confirming the language in this ordinance. Or recommending it, correct?
Well, it wouldn't.
We, it's just something that goes along.
We're, we're, we're only recommending, we're providing a recommendation, yes, or a recommendation, no. In support or against this ordinance, we don't have the final say, that's for the, the Board of Supervisors. We're just providing our input as the planning commission. Um, it's ultimately up to the Board of Supervisors to agree with our input or disagree with our input. But, but let's provide our recommending input if it's a yes.
Yep, um, to Bill McNair and Jennifer Aldifer, um, this is Commissioner Walk. Uh, I ordinarily wouldn't speak at a planning commission meeting. Um. I appreciate the concern raised by Diane Kelly, uh, I share the same concern. Um, there, and I have the same uncertainty. Um, it seems like um. The vote on this ordinance, to have the planning commission vote on this ordinance uh, is inappropriate. Um, you're one step ahead of the process. I understand that if the planning commission votes in favor to rezone. Then, you know, next the Board of Commissioners will take this under consideration.
Okay, Mr. Walk, we've got.
I think, I, I, I think Bill McNair. I'm not done speaking and I will complete what I intend to say.
Okay.
And that is, I think you're heading in the right direction. Um, so to like have the planning commission vote on whether to rezone or not. Perhaps in reference to a pending ordinance, but you're not voting on this ordinance.
Okay, are you complete?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, um, why don't we do that then, let's, let's have a vote on. You know, does the planning commissioner vote on changing zoning for this property from R three to R five, period? Have a roll call vote?
That's a good, that's what they should do.
Bill, do you want a motion first and a second?
Okay, um, okay. You have a motion, I thought was, the motion is to recommend. Changing the zoning for this parcel from R three to R five.
So moved.
Your second?
Yep, Brian Hyde, second. Call for a row? Okay, Dave Dunbar.
No.
Brian Hyde.
No.
Diane Kelly.
No.
Bill McNair.
Aye.
Alan Tope.
No.
David Wilson.
I'll say no.
Motion fails five to one.
Okay.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thanks, um. All right, on to um. The comprehensive plan update, I, I think we'll just do.
That. Mr. McNair, if you'll beg, if you'll beg my indulgence for one moment, thank you very much to the planning commission. Whichever way you voted, you, you serve the community and I saw that you are concerned with what the community's needs are. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What do you think, that's, that's a plus?
Yes, thank you.
Thinking.
Okay, um, do we want to um? Do we want to do any of the updates or do you just want to adjourn?
It's eleven thirty unless there's anything critical, I would say we could adjourn.
I could give a two-minute update. Just the survey results, we've gotten about four hundred and fifty responses. Um. And the majority of those are from residents, so the postcard and you can, it's graphed by the timeline and you can kind of see. When the postcard went out, um, because there was a big spike. And then it's starting to taper off, um, but the, and then also the newspaper article. So we're getting pretty good responses on that survey. Is.
What's the deadline for it, Dave?
We kind of left it open.
Okay.
And well, we can discuss that probably at the next meeting. See where we are by that point.
Well, I ask because I'm guilty of receiving the postcard and not filling it out yet, I would like to.
I did it today, Diane.
It's on my desk, so. I've been a little busy this week with a few meetings.
Yeah.
You have a lot of company.
Okay, good.
That's okay, Diane, even he requested staff to fill it out too, even though we, we work there, we don't live in the township. Well, sorry, Dave, I didn't get there yet.
Yep.
Did we ever um, figure out what we're doing with that, are we putting like a checkbox for employees or not?
Yes, there's a checkbox so that we can kind of filter results um, by resident, I think I have residents. Um, business owner, worker, and then none of the above. Um, so that when we get it, we can filter the results out. Uh, and if we want to wait results and things like that. Um, so yes, it's being taken into consideration.
And, and Dave, that, that is a required field, so people must fill that out to submit the survey.
Yeah, thank you, Greg.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to make a comment, um, just as an observation tonight, I don't know who the caller was, somebody made a. Comment about developers redeveloping vacant buildings and I don't know how that fits into our comp plan. But what Mr. Attia did at the tennis um, club is an amazing reuse of a property that probably would have sat empty forever. And I don't know how we encourage that as a township, but I would love to see us. Actively promote vacant buildings or lots that have been empty for a long time that are in an area that don't impact neighborhoods so much. I don't know how the rest of you feel about that, but um, listening to the neighbors and knowing. Um, in my mind, I've got some sites in my head that I would love to see that facility placed at. Um, I don't know if we have something like that already built into the comp plan, but I for one would love to see a focus on that.
I think that's a good idea, Diane.
Especially with COVID, I think we're seeing some businesses shut down even and. Um, you know, we need to pivot as a board as, as society is pivoting, so.
We, we have some overlay in, in field districts, but then there's also stuff we can do for existing buildings. And I can provide some documents that my employer has created in the past in that respect. They really focused on the Bethlehem Steel, you know, twenty five years ago. And not necessarily the casino, but a lot of like the accessory buildings around it and how they've transformed into. You know, stuff for North Hampton Community College and that kind of stuff, so. There are mechanisms to encourage it.
Yeah, I don't want to keep y'all too late tonight, but I just wanted to talk about that before I forgot.
Yeah, redevelopment will be a major facet of the comp plan and what comes out of it, so.
Excellent, thank you.
So just, there's some comments that popped up, do we have courtesy of the floor on the agenda or is that? For free?
Um. We, we.
On the agenda?
It is on the agenda, if we were kind of exhausted of the courtesy, we.
Like, you never know, there's, could be somebody ruled it, you know.
If, if I may, this is Robert Hodges, it's, it is a non-agenda item and it's about the actual makeup of the planning commission. Um, I've been at many of these meetings in the last year and I, I keep hearing, I believe the name is Vinnie Quinn. Uh, on roll call and he, I've never seen him there. Um, is he a member or not?
He is currently still a member, um, with the COVID, his job has switched his hours. So that's why you haven't seen him for a while, but he was a regular attendee up until probably March or April. So.
The, the other reason I asked the question is because on the township website, it says vacant. His name is not on there, instead it says vacant, so.
Well, somebody has not notified me.
Okay, well, feel free to look at the township website. Because my question is, is there an open spot and if so, is it being advertised to people to, to apply for the position?
You can always submit your application, if it says vacant, go ahead.
Yeah, please submit your application.
And even. Even if there's not a vacancy, this is for anybody that's still on the call, there is a form to fill out to volunteer on any of the boards. And they do keep your um, information on file, so if something even were to open up in the near future, they would get in touch with you to. See if you're interested in the board and I can tell you that um, it may not be the board of your choosing, but um, you know, that. They may not sound like most exciting, like our shade tree, but every little piece of the puzzle is, is critical and important to the township. And, and being involved, I can speak personally, is very rewarding to give back to the community this way.
Has there been any thought given to at the beginning of a meeting such as this saying, by the way, to the township, there is a. A vacancy, anybody who wishes to apply, please do so, instead of having people going to the website, which is sometimes very hard to navigate.
Sure. Okay.
Technically speaking, I don't think the planning commission has a vacancy right now.
It actually, I said, I just brought it up, it does say vacancy.
Yeah.
So we, we just weren't informed. But anyway.
We, we've interviewed.
If you put in the uh, applicant, I got called two years later. And now here I am, eleven years later. At eleven thirty six at night, so be careful what you ask for.
I'm not actually speaking for myself, anybody out there who is interested might not know about it. And if they come to a planning commission meeting, if it's announced right at the beginning, they might say, hey, I'm interested in that, I'll apply.
Chairman McNair.
That's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
Chairman McNair.
Yes.
This, this is Commissioner Walk. Um, it was stated at the Board of Commissioners meeting last night that there is a vacancy for the planning commission.
Um, okay.
So it was communicated at the Board of Commissioners, as Commissioner Kelly said, the website indicates there's a vacancy. I believe it's been vacant for some time, I believe you're, you're aware of it, uh, so please in the future. Openly communicate vacancies on the planning commission.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, I didn't, I did not know that, I missed the meeting.
Well, he was.
I did not know that either.
I, I thought it had been discussed, um, I, I didn't know why it wasn't being brought up from you, so I didn't know if there was something. So I didn't know if there was something. But we've started the process. I didn't know where it stood, whether, if you didn't know about it, I'm kind of surprised.
Well, moving right along.
So if you like, I can give you a 30-second rundown of next month. All right, we have three repeats. Oh, yes. Bizotti Parkview is coming in for their conditional use. We have Luther Crest Independent Living Apartments and 798 Housman Road. The pair are coming in to continue their process. And we have two new projects, a minor subdivision at 1326 Lime Kiln Road. For those of you who are not aware, that's the old Novak landfill site. And the other one is the mosque at 1500 Ridgeview Drive is coming back. They're looking to knock down the entire mosque and replace it. So those are the projects we will see in December.
Where's the mosque again?
1500 Ridgeview Drive.
Right behind the building.
Just the time. Yeah, next to Stevens, going south.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Everybody be well.
Have a good night.
We have, I think we have motion on the floor. Are we going to second?
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Good night.